I'd like to call the order, the April 14th Clive City Council meeting. Would the clerk please call roll? Mayor Edwards here. Council members Klein.
Here.
McCoy.
Here.
Judkins.
Here.
Weaver.
Here.
Michelini.
Here.
Got it.
Very good. We have everyone here now. If you would all rise and join us with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Next, we have approval of the agenda. I'm not aware of any changes.
Reapproval.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the agenda. Further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The agenda is approved. The next item on the agenda is the oath of office for our new council member. And so if you would go down front, my guess is someone might want to take a picture of you.
All right. So.
He wants.
Aye.
Aye.
Sure. I'm Michelini. You solemnly swear.
Desolemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
So faithfully and impartially.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Discharge all duties of the office of council member in the city of Clive.
Discharge all duties. All duties of the office of council member in the city of Clive.
As now or hereafter required by law.
As now or hereafter required by law.
Congratulations.
He doesn't like it.
Excellent. No photo box.
He asked for me to be the family photo.
Well, before we move on. Shrikanth, would you like to say anything to the council? Or to those that are here? You might start with pronouncing your name so that everyone here would get it recorded and maybe hopefully can get it correct going forward.
No problem. Yeah, so it's pronounced Shrikanth Michelini. And I think what I'd just like to say is, you know, I'm honored to be amongst the rest of the council here. I'm hoping I can live up to the high standard you guys, you know, espouse every day. And I'm looking forward to representing all the citizens and residents of Clive and doing everything we can to make this as good and even better a place to live. Thank you.
Thank you. Would your wife like to say a few words? The next item is a proclamation of a day of solidarity with Ukraine, which we're declaring on April the 19th. And let me read the proclamation for you. Whereas the city of Clive and our community stand in solidarity with the people of Ukraine, a country of 44 million people now on the verge of humanitarian catastrophe. Whereas this senseless act of violence affects not only Ukrainian freedom, but freedom and democracy globally. And whereas we mourn for those who have lost their lives, have been displaced and communities destroyed. Whereas our hearts break as we watch innocent children and adults run and seek of refuge. And our deepest condolences go out to those who've been deeply impacted. Whereas now is the time to call for an immediate end to the military aggression. We join the global community in calling for an end to violence and the reestablishment of peace. And whereas we hope for compassion and unity to compel the hearts and minds of our global leaders. Let us remember our commitment to uphold the Universal Declaration of Human Rights. Now therefore, I do by here designate Tuesday, April 19th as a day of solidarity with Ukraine. And I ask all the people of Clive to stand in support of Ukraine and call for peace. Thank you. And those of you that are students of history will recall that April the 19th is the day the Revolutionary War began, Lexington and Concord. It's also the day that the Nazis invaded the Warsaw Ghetto. So moving on from that. We're next to our citizen presentation portion of the agenda when any citizen can approach the council on an item that is not on the agenda. And while Pete checks online and we check the chambers here, let me just read our. Our pillars of character support. Clive supports the pillars of character counts endeavoring at all times to remote and model principles of trustworthiness, respect, responsibility, fairness, caring and citizenship. In conducting our work, we expect that all participants will act in a respectful manner, consistent with these principles. So Pete, do we have anyone online this evening?
We have a number of people online. For those who are participating virtually, if you're on the phone, you can unmute yourself by pressing star six and then raise your hand by pressing star nine. For those participating via video, you can catch our attention by using the raise hand function under reactions at the bottom of your Zoom video screen. So click on reactions and one of your choices will be to raise hand. Mayor, at this time, I do not see any hands going up.
Do we have one in the chamber who wants to approach the council on an item that is not on the agenda? Yes, sir, if you could come to the podium and identify yourself for the record.
For the record, my name is Chase Boardman. I'm a Clive resident. And also for the record, in the context of what I'm about to say, I'm registered as, that have generally identified as a Democrat of one stripe or another for most of my life. That said, I'm deeply troubled by conduct I observed during this recent special election. It's especially important at a time when the credibility of elections has on a nationwide scale been called into question. It's a poor display of leadership that actively goes out of its way to create disillusionment and citizenship among its citizens. Under the Iowa code and the Clive City Charter, city council elections are supposed to be nonpartisan. Now, I voted in other places and I've seen elections in foreign countries. I'm a retired member of the Foreign Service. Never seen a nonpartisan election that was blatantly partisan as aspects of this one were. A few days before the election, Polk County Democrats contacted me via text message reminding me to vote. The message, had it stopped there, would have been, if not laudable, least acceptable. There's nothing wrong with the get out the vote campaign. However, it didn't stop there. Instead, it advocated for me to vote for a specific candidate. The only reason I can see for the Democratic Party to back a particular person in elections is because he or she is a Democrat. I rather doubt they'd send me a message to vote and then show for an appendant, much less a Republican. The party Facebook page says in about so many words, turning Iowa blue, one city council, school board, county, statehouse and statewide seated a tie. Some of those are partisan elections, however, the city of Clive's elections are not. That's not nonpartisan, that statement. And if anything, it admits plans are certainly expected to ignore, if not violate, the spirit, if not the letter of state nonpartisan election statutes. The morning of the election, I received a similar message, this time from the Clive Democrats, again, reminding me to vote for their candidate. Which part of nonpartisan isn't clear? One would think that a candidate who also happens to be a lawyer would know better than to ignore rules and standards of nonpartisan campaigning. This election was effectively a recall of a temporary pointy hiding under the guise of a special election challenge. If you look at the stances on the apparent issues, there's not much, if any, difference in the candidates on the issues. Their platforms are virtually indistinguishable. The recall election in the petition for it was set up by Democratic Party. Mr. Michelini, the Democratic Party supporters put together the petitions to challenge that and bring the election. That's their right. But they brag about it in their publications. Do they think the voters of Clive are stupid and nonpartisanship? They can't recognize what to me appears to be a partisan grab for power, even if that awareness comes out through the fact. Unless you, now, unless you think saying this is a fraud or stolen election, I'm not. Do I think Mr. Michelini won? Yeah, he got most of the votes. And I see no reason to think that any of those votes were fraudulently cast. I do hesitate to say that it was a fair and square win. That would have required an ethical, nonpartisan campaign in both practice and appearance. I think that the Democratic Party owes the citizens of Clive an apology for turning what should have been a straightforward, nonpartisan election into just the opposite. Thank you.
Thank you for your thoughts. I think I can speak on behalf of each member of the council that we are committed to nonpartisanship. And I think if you look at our history, going back many, many decades. And many have commented on this, that we don't know the political affiliation of those that are to our left or right. I mean, that's been true for many, many years. And I think we would very much like to see a return to the days when that was always the case. Where we were dealing, this is a nonpartisan position which we sit. And we want the elections to be of that, following the nonpartisanship as well. And we've operated on that matter. And I think council members will do everything they can to ensure that continues into the future. So I appreciate you coming tonight. Anyone else want to comment?
I will, I will comment and I appreciate your comments. There's a lot of feelings like that that have been going around, right? I think we need to focus. And again, I think bringing awareness from the public side, not just political side, is important tonight for you to make those comments. Personally, I feel very comfortable with working with Shrikanth. Sat down with him in a meeting and really had a great conversation about it. And it was a, right? It was a direct conversation by both of us. And that's not what he wants. I believe him. He wants to work for this council and for the residents. And I think time will tell. And I would say, let's give him a chance and see what he does. And I think you agree by your comments. Yeah, yeah. But I do appreciate your comments and I think they were important for somebody else to say it, other than some of the political parties that were throwing mud around and others. So again, several of us have met with them. We've had very direct conversations, both back and forth. And, and you know, I don't think it defines him. It defines the parties. And unfortunately, that's been going on for several years now, which is disturbing. And so we'll let him have his time up here for two years to define Shrikanth. And I think it will go well.
Yeah, I appreciate your comments. I think that's a great perphrase of really what happened. Appreciate your comments very well. Again, Shrikanth won the special election. For the last 30 years in the city of Clive, we haven't had a special election. The citizens have been very happy with the appointments we've made. As a matter of fact, the last appointment that we made was when Susan Judkins, a Democrat, was right here, was, was appointed to the board. Before her, Michael McCoy was appointed to this board. Both have been long-term, solid individuals that have served with distinction for over 10 years. I agree with you that a political party has utilized a system to galvanize their supporters to get out and launch a special addiction, a special petition. I'd also add that this special petition was announced mainly because, and how they got the signatures, that somehow the election was stolen or that, that their particular candidate choice should have been chosen, which that candidate was not. So all of a sudden, it's a bait and switch, right? And so here we are, they, they needed a candidate and Shrikanth won. And good for him, congratulations. However, I will say that nonpartisanship seems to be over. And that's very, very unfortunate to me. For many years, we haven't had this issue. And now we have it wearing its ugly head, which I think is very difficult for people to work together. It makes things difficult because it politicizes everything, right? Look at how dysfunctional our federal government is. Look at how dysfunctional our state government is. We don't need that here in Clive. And I think you've eloquently gave your opinions on that, which I appreciate. You know, Shrikanth, you're here for two years and we want to see you working diligently, which I know you will. I have full confidence in that. But let's, let's be honest. This is very disappointing and very costly to the taxpayers of Clive as well for these special elections.
Eric, I'm just going to respectfully disagree with one aspect of what you said here, that nonpartisanship is over. I think we saw it challenged severely in this election. But I don't see that that prevents us from reestablishing that going forward. So I hope that we can do that. And I think Shrikanth is committed to that as well. At this point, we need to go forward and hopefully not see a repeat in future elections of what we've seen now. Shrikanth, I think you wanted to comment.
Yeah, I just, I wanted to add that, yeah, I'm very much looking forward, like I said, to working with all of you and, you know, learning from you as well, right? You, you've all been doing this for much longer and it's worked. And I would love to talk to you specifically more about your concerns too. Because that's, that's what this is. That, that's what this is all about. It's about hearing what the citizens want, what they, what they need.
Any further comments?
No, I'll address that. What we need are for political parties to stay out of local elections that are nonpartisan. That's what we need. And I hope we can have that moving forward. I really, I really, really do.
Is there anyone else in the chamber who wants to address the council on an item that is not on the agenda? Seeing no hands up, we'll move to consent requires a resolution.
Reapproval.
Second.
Motion and a second for the consent. Further discussion? If not, would the council please vote? And would the clerk please post that?
I'm a yes on that, Matthew. I just timed down.
And that passes five to zero. Richard, I believe you've got the next presentation for us.
Yes, thank you tonight. I have the newest member of the Leisure Surfaces team that I'm excited to introduce to you. We have Jonathan Gibbs, who will be replacing and filling in Jeff. Jeff Lucas's old position since he's been promoted to the Recreation Manager. So tonight Jonathan will introduce himself, but we're really excited about the experience and different kind of experiences than what our team has now that will really help us moving forward with a lot of our athletics, our summer camps, our programming and a lot of the work that we're going to be doing at the Harbox Center. So with that, I'll turn over to Jonathan.
Good evening, Jonathan Gibbs. Most people just call me John, that's fine. Happy to be here, happy for the, or that the city of Clive is giving me a chance to work with you guys. Looking forward to meeting everyone and just, if you see me around, please stop, introduce yourself. I'd love to get to know you better.
Welcome to Clive.
Thank you.
Thing from a line of counsel. We're very glad, very glad you're here.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. We'll move on to the action items on the agenda. And Amanda, it looks like you got a few of these, starting with the Emerald Isle.
Yes, good evening, Mayor Council. Matthew, can I have the doctor? Thank you. If it'll focus here in a minute. Um, so tonight we have the third and final consideration of the Emerald Isle Town Homes rezoning. That request is to go from R1 single family to PUD planned unit development. There have been no changes to the development concept or additional public comments received since the public hearing. But I did want to give a quick rehash of some of the key development points, since we do have a new council member with us tonight. So the project is for a 41 town home unit development, which would be kind of a medium density residential use. The future land use map did contemplate high density residential for this area. So this would be in keeping with all of the traffic studies and everything that had been done for the Hickman Corridor and those recommended improvements through Hickman and 156th Street. So those, those are all incorporated here to address any traffic concerns. Those improvements will be made at a later date. In lieu of the buffer on the east property line that we would typically see between a town home and a single family residential development, the neighboring property owner requested a six-foot tall wooden privacy fence be installed instead. Staff is supportive of that request as it is consistent with the long-term redevelopment plans of the Emerald Isle neighborhood, which was originally annexed into the city as an already developed county subdivision. It's also consistent with what has taken place for previous rezoning approvals in this neighborhood. Specifically, the property on the south side of Emerald Isle Drive here, that was initially planned to be a come and go and was rezoned. They put up the temporary wooden privacy fence as well as the interim condition as we work forward towards full redevelopment. The open space on the property is 47.9%. There wasn't a desire from the city to take land area for parkland dedication in this case. They're only required to provide 0.69 acres. And since the city already owns the land directly to the north of this property, there wasn't really anywhere that we wanted to add land in this case. So instead of land area dedication, the property owner is going to make physical improvements on the city, currently city-owned property, towards satisfying that requirement. At the end of the process, any gap in what would have been required from a monetary standpoint versus the improvements that were actually installed would be paid as a cash payment to the city. So I believe that number came out to right at $100,000. When we take the purchase price by the number of acres of parkland that would have been required. So that area, just say that the trail and landscaping installed costs $80,000. The city would then get $20,000 to put into other parkland improvements. You can see on the concept here where the trail is to be installed on the south side of Sheridan and a dashed line showing it coming up here around and future over to the existing Stonegate Park. At this time, we are not going to have the property owner install anything past their property, east property line for that trail improvement. Since we don't yet know in the future developed condition on the city's north property, we didn't want to put it in the wrong spot and end up tearing it up in a few years. So that will be a future improvement that the city would make or would be made in conjunction with development of that property if it was disposed of for a non-city development. The existing drainage way will provide a portion of the site stormwater management. That drainage way is here on the north property line. It is partially on the private property and partially on the property owned by the city that's included in the zoning. The full design of that will take place throughout the site plan and preliminary plat process. But I did bring a couple pictures to show that capture the general design intent for that area to kind of create a park-like setting for the trail to be in. So those are a few examples that staff and the developer have been working from to kind of come up with that final design and landscaping plan for that area. So with that, I would take any questions that you all might have, but staff does recommend approval of the rezoning as well as the zoning change and development agreement.
Questions for Amanda.
Michael? Yeah, let me go back to a couple of slides to the drainage. It's been, you know, caught my eye since the first time you brought it in.
Yeah, these two.
Yeah, it's a bit of the first time maybe I actually heard you say, you've probably said it every time. But that's part of the property of the development, but also part of the property of the city.
Yes.
And that retention then is taking care of that property's responsibility, correct? The whole piece. Do we often do that with giving land to take care of retention for a property of our own land without them having to do it on their own site?
Yeah, so this one is a little bit unique with all of the utility challenges that we've had north of the property. It's not unusual that the city participates in that future stormwater management, long-term maintenance. You know, we frequently accept those facilities at the end of the project. This one is just a little bit different since the city happens to be already that adjacent property owner. And I should be very clear that the costs associated with the changes to the drainage way to meet the stormwater management requirements will not be counted as parkland dedication. We will parse out those numbers. So that would not be incorporated there. So it's, it's a little bit of a different circumstance for Clive. But I think as we get into more of these redevelopment and infill development kind of projects, we're going to see more and more of these situations come forward. The city is a little bit bigger of a participant in those.
Who takes on the future responsibility for that drainage?
Yep, so the way the development agreement is structured right now is the property owner would continue to do the maintenance through that. We will determine through the preliminary plats and site plan whether the city will actually vacate that property or if it makes most sense to do that through an easement that would give the property owner that requirement or the ability to maintain that. But the development agreement does include language in there that they will maintain that stormwater facility.
Thank you. Other questions?
Any comments from the neighbors, Amanda?
Uh, no, I have not received any additional comments from the neighbors immediately to the east who had come to the meetings. We did receive some comments early on from the town homes off to the west along Sheridan Avenue that they were generally opposed to any rezoning of the property and wanted to see it remain in a single family configuration.
Are you satisfied with the landscaping plan and the fence as far as the buffer zone from the other residential areas?
So we are not yet into the site plan and preliminary plat meetings. We have some early submittals from that, but they, that came in prior to the conversations around the fence and the changes to landscaping. So we're just waiting on that resubmital prior to moving forward for full staff review. And then, of course, it'll go to planning and zoning commission and then back before you all. So I'm confident we will get there, but we just have not seen those plans yet.
Other questions?
Amanda, the, the east buffer fence, that's paid for by the developer, right?
Yes.
Okay, and then is the HOA in charge of the maintenance of that over time?
Yes, so it, for the development agreement is structured that the HOA for the town homes that is set up will do the long-term maintenance. But the property to the east that is currently the single family home has the ability to remove that fence and actually the requirement to remove that fence at the time that it would develop. So we bake that in there. Yep, and then of course, any redevelopment on that property to the east will go through a similar rezoning process. So we'll have that opportunity to reinforce that requirement through their development review and zoning change and development agreement.
Family homeowners responsible for the cost and the execution of removing that privacy fence at the time that they sell?
It would be the developer of the property that would have to do that at that time.
Is that, is that, we have language with that that describes that, spells it out?
Yes, yep, that's in the development agreement.
Okay.
Other question?
Yeah, just a clarification. This is probably all common and everything, but why, am I confused? Why am I going to build something and then the next person's going to clean, have to clean it up? That we're putting that on them like, surprise, here the fence you have to remove.
Sure.
Why aren't they then removing it, whoever built it, to get this passed?
So the concern that had come up during the public hearing was that what if the developer of the property to the east decided to leave the fence? And then we had this weird kind of interim condition that was never the intent and wouldn't be in keeping with our kind of fence standards that we would typically see in those buffer configurations.
Why wouldn't this developer then have to take it down? They're building it to get their development site approved. Then the next one gets approved, this developer takes that fence down. Instead of putting a burden on a new piece of property that's.
Sure.
Don't get that.
So the concern that we discussed previously was that the town homes then would not want to take it down. And at this point, the developer will be, you know, gone, they'll be out of it. It'll be all sold, turned over to the homeowners association. And removal of just a standard wooden privacy fence is fairly minimal. So I don't think it will be an onus on any future development of the property to the east. It just ensures that the town homes can't then fight to keep the fence that was only intended to be temporary.
I don't think you want to put that on an HOA. It's probably not going to happen if you do that.
Well, that's my point, right? I mean.
And then because they're just going to go down to the homeowners themselves.
Right.
You don't want that.
All these arguments we have on these type of things, it's because the developer's gone, right?
Sure.
And it's, they got what they wanted, then they're gone. And so.
Well, the new developer just has to bake it into their business case. I mean, and like Amanda's saying, it's not that, that onerous, so.
It'll, I mean, it's the same kind of fence you might have in your backyard. So it's fairly minimal to remove, particularly when you already have large construction equipment and they're doing site grading and tree removals and that kind of demolition of the house, all those things.
All right, further discussion, we're looking here for.
I'd move that ordinance number one, 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 eight be considered for the third time, placed upon its passage and adopted.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second? Motion, a second on the ordinance. Further discussion? If not, would the council please vote? And then would the clerk please post that vote? And that passes by a vote of five to zero. Ordinance number one, 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 eight is declared to have been enacted. Was there anything else on this matter we needed to attend to, Amanda? Did that take care of it?
Not to my knowledge.
Okay, thank you. While you're there, tell us about Joanne's.
All right, I'm the dot cam again. So tonight, we also have a site plan amendment for a facade update for the relocated Joanne's Fabrics and Crafts. This relocated location is the former Knobby's on University. There are no other significant site impacts proposed here other than the facade update. When staff did our site evaluation, it's actually in pretty good condition out there. The trees at the time all appeared to be in alive condition, though it was winter. So the applicant is aware that through the spring and summers, the construction would go on. If it turns out some of those trees are in fact dead, that they would be replaced as part of this process before certificates of occupancy would be issued. And initially, the applicant had submitted a preferred design that did not meet the requirements of the city's development standards manual. The green color that is their sign and logo is what they had proposed to actually paint the new facade wall. So that was a pretty vibrant green and our manual requirements are for more neutral, naturally occurring colors. So at the March Plan and Zoning Commission meeting, that consideration was postponed to give the applicant time to come up with an alternative design. So they submitted this revised concept. It doesn't show up super great on the dot cam here, but it is maintaining much of the existing brick on the building. It will take off the existing kind of vestibule overhang portion that is Knobby's. And then this lower part of the new facade is a gray, charcoal gray ephesus. This portion up here is actually a like architectural aluminum cladding that looks like a wood grain. And this doesn't show it great on the rendering here, but we now do have the updated architectural spec sheet where you can see some new ephesus paneling will continue across to pull in the other color that Joanne's typically uses on their buildings, which is whitetail is the name of it, is just a, an off-white shade. They will also incorporate a little bit of that wall parapet onto the south facade along University and will be installing their new sign there. That will also be the whitetail color that is proposed to match the front.
I mean, that's two signs then they're going to have, does that meet our sign ordinance?
Yes, it will meet the sign ordinance since they do have frontage along two streets, actually. And they are set back over the two hundred and fifty, I think, is the, the separation requirement. So they get our highest possible sign area that they could have on the building. So what they're showing here will be in keeping with the sign ordinance requirements. And then they are doing a landscaping refresh around the entryway. Obviously, there will be some sidewalk repair with the removal of the existing canopy and then just kind of redoing all that landscaping to bring it up in a nice new, fresh sight.
Would this include, would this kick in? I, I love the plan and it's a great area that's all being kind of redone up there way and kind of that old frontage. So it's a great addition. Does this thing kick in maybe a little bit in the sense that you do a little refresh throughout?
The entire parking lot area and a little down because we seem to forget about some of those other areas that aren't getting the refreshed love from these remodels.
Yep, so when I was out on site, it actually appeared to be in pretty good shape. There had been some recent patching and repairs done. So we can also evaluate that. Of course, there was snow on the ground, so it's a little hard to see everything. So we can evaluate that through just site plan compliance if there are any major issues. I didn't see any at this particular center. I know the center next to it that has half-price books and the New Burlington, it had some very serious potholes. And I was happy to see last time I was out there shopping that most of those have been patched and repaired. So there's definitely been some improvement out there. I know Mark, our code enforcement officer, has been working with a couple of these shopping centers. So those are getting addressed.
Landscaping?
Yeah.
I mean, that thing is just a concrete running out there, right? I mean, there's nothing.
Yes.
And then even on those kind of sides. Okay, we should look at that, right? It's our one chance to encourage them to make some of those changes, plantings and trees and such.
So I just wanted to say thank you for standing firm on the key lime front edifice because that was god awful. This looks very nice.
Great.
The other one was.
It doesn't, wouldn't be Clive if we didn't get the green right, right?
Yeah.
That's lime green.
That's, yeah.
So if there aren't further discussions, we're looking for a motion here to.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the site plan amendment. Further discussion? Hearing none, would the council please vote? And would clerk please post that vote? Site plan amendment for Joanne Fabrics and Crafts. Pass. Maybe. It did pass by a vote of five to zero? It passes by a vote of five to zero. We're going to have to get this. All right. What about Crestview, Amanda?
Yes, so Crestview has submitted a site plan amendment primarily for a building addition on the north side of the building. So it will have a little bit of demolition, oh, sorry, dot cam again. A little bit of demolition of the existing storm shelter that is on the north side here. And then the new addition in that location is actually being constructed to the storm shelter standard. The existing shelter is quite undersized. So the new shelter will actually provide space for everyone in the building in the event that that would be needed. So that space on the inside will be classrooms. And then there are also some other interior renovations proposed throughout the inside of the building that our building department will review with their plan submittal. The exterior here will just match what's existing quite closely. You basically can't even tell, looking at these, where the addition is, which is great. So you can see there are some dashed lines circling a few areas on the elevations. Those are the new portions. So they are kind of hard to find, which is exactly what we want to see with building additions, additions blending in well with the existing. The site plan does include an alternate bid option as well. You can see there are two areas that have these, or three areas, sorry, that have this dashed box around them. So the school district is definitely doing the addition, the parking lot and the stormwater. They needed to get the bid numbers back to determine if it was feasible at this time to make this other change, which would be filling in the existing courtyard. That requires some changes to site utilities. So dependent on the bid numbers, they have two options for the site plan. That one is pretty minor and won't really have any exterior impact. However, they do have proposed additional trees that they will plant if that takes place and then some storm sewer routing that would have to be changed if that was approved. So staff is comfortable with the plan going forward with or without the bid alternate. So we would recommend approval either way. They will be removing up to eleven trees, nine for sure, and two if the additional work is bid for as well and accepted. And then up to fifty-six new trees will be planted with at minimum forty-six trees being planted. There are also over a hundred shrubs that will be planted throughout the site here. We have worked with Crestview on their various site plan amendments to incrementally increase the trees that are on site. And you can see here, there's been a focus on improving that buffer to the residents that are just to the west of the site and focusing the trees in that location, which leaves the playground area still open for active kid play. There are also two underground detention basins that are added below the reconstructed parking lot on this side. The parking lot is substantially remaining the same as it is today. They'll just be excavating, putting in the underground detention and then reporing those parking lots. There's also building mounted lights that will be installed on the addition. Staff did receive the photometric plan for that and they are, you know, the downcast typical lights that we would see on a school like this, so won't have any negative impact beyond what is already occurring just from general light in the area. So that won't get anywhere near spilling over the property lines. The Plan and Zoning Commission did unanimously recommend approval and staff would recommend approval of the site plan amendment, which is the one condition that we are still finalizing the stormwater management maintenance agreement that goes along with those underground detention facilities, which is in keeping with the requirements of the post-construction stormwater management manual as we've progressed in our stormwater management, recognizing that we need to have some of those maintenance agreements spelled out more specifically. So that's still under review by the school's legal department, but we're confident we can come to terms on getting that finalized.
Questions for Amanda on Crestview?
Michael, any question, comment? So you answered with the trees and the bushes and such, great. I mean, that is one desert property, right, in that area? And so that's a great addition. On that tree line up there against the multifamily residence, that's still a chain link fence going across that whole thing? What's the purpose of, hello, we're a school, welcome to our property with a chain link fence between it? Is that the schools or the apartments? Because it just, it's not welcoming at all.
You know, that's a good question. I don't actually know the answer to that. I don't know if anyone with the school district is on that could answer that question.
One moment. Again, for folks who want to catch our attention or are online, you can use the raise hand function on your Zoom screen.
Could we inquire about that to see if there's a purpose for it? Or maybe this is the time to remove it?
Yeah, we could certainly.
It's just, I've never seen another school fenced in like that one, especially next to a multifamily. I mean, we want to invite them down to play on that playground and the, in the baseball field and stuff like that, right? In the summers when it's not being used and that type of thing.
Anthony Harbaugh from Shy Fattery is on the call. Anthony, you should be able to unmute yourself and start your video.
Hey, I was just going to say that I'm the, I'm the civil engineer on the project. I don't believe anyone from the district was able to make it to the meeting tonight, but I can certainly follow up with them and get back with the, with Amanda with the information about who owns that fence.
And maybe with the encouragement of if it could disappear during this, right, remodel?
Certainly bring it up.
Okay.
Other, other questions? Again, we're looking for approval of site plan.
I'll move approval of site plan amendment.
Second.
And that incorporates the stormwater issue?
Right, right.
Further discussion? Seeing none, would the council please vote? And would clerk please post that vote once it's available? Refreshed. So the site plan amendment for Crestview passes by a vote of five to zero. Thank you, Amanda.
Thank you.
Liz Utilities?
So tonight is on the agenda for second consideration of the ordinances adjusting the utility rates, which we proposed and you approved in the budget process. So we incorporated the three percent for the water rates for your upcoming fiscal year, a two percent increase for the sewer rates and then ten percent increase for stormwater. We have had no public comment since the last meeting as well, so staff is recommending approval.
Thank you. Questions for Liz? If not, we're looking for the second reading.
Move that ordinance number one, 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 five. Having been considered by the council, be voted on for passage prior to its final adoption.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the ordinance. Further discussion? Seeing none, would the council please vote? And would clerk please post that vote once it's entered? Second reading on that passes by a vote of five to zero.
Move that ordinance number one, 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 sixteen. Having been considered by the council, be voted on for passage prior to its final adoption.
Second. Motion, a second. Further discussion? Seeing none, would the council please vote? And would clerk please post that vote? Second reading on ordinance number one, 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 six passes by a vote of five to zero.
Move that ordinance number one, 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 seven. Having been considered by the council, be voted on for passage prior to its final adoption.
Second. We do have a second. Further discussion? If not, would the council please vote? And would clerk please post the vote? Second consideration of ordinance number one, 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 seven passes by a vote of five to zero. Liz, tell us about cash.
Okay, so the ordinance addressing change, change funds that have been established for each of the departments. We have the library in need of increasing their change fund from two hundred and fifty dollars to five hundred dollars to accommodate the satellite library at the Harbach Center, including goat merchandise sales at that location. Staff is requesting waiving the readings to declare the ordinance enacted so that we can have sufficient funds available for the open house that is going to, that is scheduled for early May.
Thank you. Questions for Liz? Otherwise, we've been asked to suspend the rule.
Move that the rule requiring that an ordinance be considered and voted on for passage to, at two council meetings prior to this meeting be suspended with respect to the ordinance number one, 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 nine or one thousand one hundred and nineteen.
Second. Motion, a second to suspend the rules. Four affirmative votes are required. Further discussion? Seeing none, would the council please vote? And would clerk please post that vote? The motion to suspend the rule passes by a vote of five to zero.
I'd move that. Apologize. What is that? Ordinance number one, 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 nine. Be considered, placed upon its passes and adopted.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Motion and a second. Further discussion? If not, would the council please vote? And would clerk please post the vote? Has everyone voted? Someone has not.
I wonder who.
Okay.
Quit distracting him.
Thank you. So that passes by a vote of five to zero. Ordinance number one, 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 nine is declared to have been enacted. Thank you. Mike, animals?
Evening, Your Honor, members of council. As you know, we have a 2080 agreement currently for animal control services for the city of Clive, both for the city of Clive and the city of Urbendale, through the city of West Des Moines by the West Des Moines Police Department. The 2080 agreement we're currently in started in 2014 and went on until any party would want out of the agreement. Well, back in December, the city of West Des Moines informed Clive and Urbendale that they no longer wanted to be a part of the 2080 agreement and no longer wanted to provide us with animal control services. That kicked into effect an eighteen-month opt-out clause where all the parties had, had eighteen months to, to work to get set up on their own. Well, in the meantime, Clive Police Department, Urbendale Police Department started looking for other options. We were able to find a. We were able to find a, another option with Polk County. Polk County has offered to do a 2080 agreement with us to provide animal control services for us at a substantially reduced rate from what we had with the city of West Des Moines. And both Clive and Urbendale would like to be set up to start by July 1 with Polk County providing our animal control services. We've also been in conversation with furry friends. They're the organization that receives animals that are picked up by animal control. They've made it clear that they want to continue a relationship with Clive and Urbendale, and we just still have to work out some details on that agreement. But we have an A and a B in front of you tonight. The A is a resolution terminating the agreement between the city of Clive and the city of Urbendale and the city of West Des Moines effective July 1. And the B is a resolution approving a cooperative services agreement with Polk County, Iowa to provide, provide our animal control services. Staff would recommend passage of both these items.
Thank you, Chief. Questions? Eric?
Chief, this is great news to me. I'm just wondering, there's a substantial difference in the pricing on that, as you're well aware.
Yes, it is.
$80,000 with West Des Moines and West Pet versus $17,000 in Polk County. Is there any differential change in service levels or that's a huge disparity right there? Any, any way to explain that?
Going through the, the agreement with Polk County and having conversations with the other smaller communities that they serve, they're very happy with the service and it sounds like the level of service we get, if anything, may increase a little bit. Back in 2014, when this 2080 agreement started, we had partial services that were provided us through FY 15 and 16. It was supposed to ramp up and, and be full animal control services, and this was on a per population share. And every year, the city of West Des Moines would, would figure all of their costs and we paid a proportion share of not only the, the animal control officers, but all the equipment purchased, all the supervision. They have police sergeants that supervise their organization. So there, I, there was a lot in that. I can't tell you why there is such a difference, but it wasn't a divorce we were looking for, but we are looking forward to our new relationship.
Seems like things have worked that well, and it's when you looked over those West Pet numbers, and I did on a regular basis, ours were always much smaller than both West Des Moines and Urbendale right there. So it seems like a good match and you know, from what was kind of a concern there, it looks like we've got a, we've got a great resolution to it and a much more cost-effective one for the, for the taxpayers.
And, and any holes in the service that might come up that, that are unintended, our police officers are still there. You've read in your monthly reports, we occasionally wrangle a deer off the highway or out of a basement or construction. So the officers are out there 24/7, but we do want to have professional animal control who's got the, the equipment and the, the knowledge on, on how to handle animals most of the time.
Thank you.
Ted?
Obviously, I had same question as Eric about service levels because it is a pretty stark difference. Obviously, I'm not complaining. Certainly happy that we can get that savings. I guess one comment I'd make is, you know, this was forced upon us, but you know, we have all these agreements. Maybe we should be looking for other opportunities like this that exist out there, right? So.
Yeah, if I could comment on that too, is, and I think what we found as an opportunity here with Polk County Sheriff's Office is they have started doing these for other communities. And I think they're also rightsizing their service. And so I think they saw it as an opportunity where to Councilman Reclines' point is we have a relatively small number of animals. And I think with their, they can take it over with their existing capacity.
Economies and scale.
So there's an economy of scale there. That, but it is, it does, as the chief and I've reflected upon this, there is a kind of a light bulb that goes off of, boy, should have had this conversation a few years ago.
Yeah.
And I would say there was a ramp up in the, in the cost, and I think that's why we're at where we are, where we are today with the West Des Moines, Urbendale, Clive arrangement. I think all three parties recognized that this wasn't as efficient as it could be anymore. And Urbendale and Clive were pushing on that a little bit, and West Des Moines said, all right, I think we'll be the lead on this and, and step back. And that was their choice to take the lead on that. And so I think in the end, it's going to be a win-win for all parties involved. And sometimes these collaborations have to evolve and you find new partners. And we found, give credit to the chiefs to find this relatively quickly. And, and there's no reason why we just can't cut it off at the end of this current fiscal year and get this. This also buys the chief some time to get the transition done too, because we'll have to work with WestCom in terms of how these services are dispatched. Obviously, Polk County is under a different dispatch agency.
Well, and I was gonna ask, I mean, do we have to update anything as far as how we communicate this to the public and for our residents if they have issues?
It shouldn't, it shouldn't be anything different from the, on the citizen's side. It'll be internal process on our side.
Yeah, we've, I've got people who are working on, working on all the details of how we're dispatching. But our, our residents shouldn't see anything different, except there'll be a different label on the truck that, that shows up. And if, in, in the meantime, if an officer needs to show up, an officer is still available as well.
Okay. I know a few years back, we had some, some residents who were very passionate about this topic and had some concerns about euthanasia policy with these. Do we know what that is with furry friends and whether we're going to hit that type of an issue?
Furry Friends is the same organization we use today. So they're, they are a no-kill shelter. We will be talking with them to put our agreement together with them, probably the same agreement with Urbendale and Clive, just to separate us out of the, since we're not West Pet anymore, but mostly the same arrangement that we had before as West Pet members.
I think when we bring back the furry friends agreement too, there's going to be a, a discussion we'll want to have on some procedural changes that they're looking at related to feral cats that I think the council should take a look at and listen to. Nothing, still going to be no-kill situation with that shelter. But they've got some ideas and some things that, that are happening across the country. I know that's come up as an issue for us in the past with certain residents. And so we want to bring that forward back to you in a separate conversation with, when we bring the furry friends agreement. I know their director wants to talk to you all about that. They're having a, I think, I think they had a lunch and learn earlier this week with Urbendale, and that's very same topic. And so we hope to bring that back to you as well.
Thank you.
Matt, pet licensing still goes through the city of Clive then?
Yeah, and all that. And that had changed. That was another piece of this is the, originally the licensing was done all shared under West Pet. And then that changed and went back to the individual cities and the softwares that go along with it. So really, the only thing that was left and then, and then furry friends kind of fit the, the gap we had on the sheltering side, because remember originally in 2014, when that 2080 was approved, it had the joint shelter aspect to it, which we found a private, you know, a nonprofit solution to that. And so really, the only component left of that 2080 was the animal control transport essentially. And so that's another reason why we were even revisiting the 2080, because there were so many pieces to it that weren't functioning anymore. So again, I think that's why this makes a lot of good sense for us right now.
Other quick, Michael?
Yeah, a couple of things. One, Ted, good point. I, I agree with you. I don't really care who shows up to my house, whether it be, you know, fire, police, animal control, but we should put it out, right? That expect to see a Polk County marked car, whatever it is.
Yep.
With their logo on it, just so they know, you know, and again, they want to help. The second one was that, that they are going to be more in tune with the goats, I suppose, since there are.
Certainly, that, that's a requirement of any new contract is that they are goat friendly.
Goat and sheep. The goat and sheep, so. And what's Windsor Heights doing?
I think they're with Polk. Is Polk County doing it for them? That, we were going to look into that. We hadn't, we haven't got the answer yet.
Yeah, maybe we asked them.
We know Altoona, Grimes and Von Durant. I do, Polk County is doing it for.
Now, Altoona. Altoona is, well, is, is larger than us now and growing, and they don't, do not seem to have any, any problems with the, the service at all, so.
I, I got a technical question on this, just a little deeper dive, just for a second. So when we talk animal control, are we talking raccoons and deer? No?
Well, they, they will respond on, on wild animal calls if they, if there's a sick raccoon or something like that. Deer carcasses in the roadway, our Public Works takes care of, of that. But, but whether it's a, whether it's a domestic animal or, or a, a goat that should happen to escape.
No.
Never happens, right?
My neighbor had a skunk and West Des Moines would not show up. It was caught in a, in a, like a bird thing and, and West Wind just said, no, we're not coming.
I've, he has.
For me, it was crazy.
Yeah, as, as West Pad, I've, I've always seen us responding and, you know, there, if we're generally there to try to take care of anything, sometimes on a sick animal, if it's not trapped, the best thing you could do is just let them go on, on their way, but.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
Move the resolution approving Chapter 20D terminate agreement by and between the city of Clive, city of Urbendale and city of West Des Moines.
Second. Motion and a second on item A, further discussion? If not, would the council please? And would clerk please post vote on terminating the agreement? And that passes by a vote of five to zero.
Resolution 6B, approving cooperative service agreement with Polk County, Iowa for animal control services.
Second.
Motion and a second on item B, further discussion? If not, would the council please vote? And the clerk please post the vote on our new agreement with Polk County. And that passes by a vote of five to zero. Thank you, Chief.
Yeah.
Didn't think you'd ever get up here, Jim.
I didn't either. Thank you, Mayor, for your consideration tonight. We're looking at the approval of a professional services agreement with Stan Tech Consultants. This is for work in the Little Walnut Creek area. So the map shows the project area, Meredith Drive, just off the screen to the north. Then our city limits to the west on Warrior Lane and then our shared border with Urbendale to the east. We started in a request for proposal process just about a year ago exactly to find a preferred consultant for work in this area. That RFP scope included four key elements. The first was looking at the feasibility for stream mitigation and wetland banking instrument, the development of that. The second was looking at stream bank restoration improvements. This would be consistent with the corridor assessment report completed in this area and similar to other work we've done on Walnut Creek in other areas of the city. Third element was trail construction. Obviously, want to look at extending the Greenbelt Trail from its current terminus at Alice's Road to the developing areas to the west and ultimately Warrior Lane. And the final element in that RFP was looking at a development, developing an ecological restoration plan, coming up with how we're going to deal with vegetation management in that area. Again, that would be similar to the work that we've completed recently east of 114th Street in the Green Belt as well. Stan Tech Consultants was selected as the preferred consultant in August of last year. And about that same time, the city of Waukegan reached out to us to discuss their needs for a sanitary sewer connection from their lift station on Warrior Lane east through this area and ultimately connecting in Urbendale to the WRA. That preferred alignment ended up kind of, it, it will end up mirroring our trunk sewer that's shown here, and we'll go right through this project area. So that kind of delayed things a little bit on our end as far as next steps, but we are ready to proceed with an initial scope of services with Stan Tech at this time. Those four elements included in this initial scope were included in the memo. And it includes some additional land surveying data collection. Waukegan's consultant is, is doing survey work in the area. We'll be piggybacking off of them to collect more data at Stan Tech's direction. Some preliminary design efforts mainly focused around the stream bank restoration work. At the end of this scope, we'll have a 30% set of plans for that work. Again, looking at the feasibility of a stream bank and mitigation banking instrument in there. So that would kind of a new scenario there, but we're looking at those developments being able to be used for credits for future work, either within the city or for other jurisdictions. So those first steps would be taken as part of this scope. And then finally, again, back to the ecological restoration piece to develop an existing conditions report on, on there. So the schedule associated with that, again, the schedule for this scope of services would start immediately on most of these elements and be completed in late summer, early, early fall of this year. The overall project schedule for all the things that we have going on out there, obviously, the sanitary sewer is the first piece of that puzzle. We're hopeful that Waukegan, and the plan is to have a project let late this year with construction to, again, hopefully proceed over the winter and, and in best case scenario, be wrapping up in this area with that construction in the spring of '23 or early summer of '23, a year from now. If that happens, we could then proceed with some stream bank restoration improvements in the area. And the final piece, the big construction piece would be following with trail construction. Again, we're getting out there a couple of years now, so it's a little more difficult to envision that for, for sure. But we would hope that we'd maybe be able to start with some trail improvements in the area in 2024 as well. So this is a multi-year project as we just laid out, and we would anticipate additional professional services with Stan Tech to follow as the work proceeds. With that, we'd recommend approval of the professional services agreement, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
Questions for Jim? Eric?
On, on that sanitary sewer right there, so that's going to mirror, can we put that? Ask them back. So that's going to mirror our storm outlet right here. Can you talk a little more about that and, and how that benefits Clive and? You know, I mean, I, I get it for Waukegan's development right there, but.
Right. They're working through the final designing alignment. We have some preliminary alignments there. One thing that we did do, and maybe Matt can help me on this, as far as the state revolving fund loan, we just received word today on how we can leverage some of those funds.
So the, with the way that Waukegan is financing their sewer improvements, they are using SRF funding to do that. And when they do that, there is sponsored project money that comes along with that, with a certain percentage of the sewer project as a part of our negotiations with Waukegan of allowing them to do this, as we basically said, we get the sponsored project money for the restoration efforts after the sewer goes through. And that could be upwards of a million, a million dollars. And so that is kind of our incentive as a city to be, to, to pause on all of this is to have some funding brought to bear on the restoration efforts that we were planning on doing anyway. It's just delayed by a year because of the sewer work. And so we did get word today and, and credit to Jim and the Stan Tech team for getting that application in a timely manner that initial reaction is it's going to be funded. And so still have to, some hoops to jump through on that. But it looks very, very good for us to, and, and Waukegan has committed that to us, that they, they had to submit the application because it's their sanitary sewer project, but they've, and we, we need to work out as we go through this kind of a formal agreement on all those details. But Waukegan's been very collaborative on this project and forthright in terms of working with us, knowing that there, they slowed us down a little bit on work that we wanted to do. So yeah, the trail originally would have been a year earlier than were originally scheduled. But again, there was a kind of a really good collaboration here and, and we've got a lot to do. And of course, there's, as we'll talk about on the next project, you know, the bidding environment's very interesting right now. But Waukegan knows that they need to get the sewer in the ground quickly and efficiently. So then we can get back to doing our work. And also, we have a lot of homes going up in this neighborhood. And so as we shared with Waukegan, we need to get this done, because we're going to have a whole lot of homes around this area now too. And we want to try to limit the disruption as much as we can, but there's definitely going to be that.
Sanitary sewer as well then? How does that work?
We don't need to.
Okay.
So we have sufficient capacities in this area. When we extended that sewer line a number of years ago, and if the council will remember, we had a very interesting project there where we ran into some very hard rock that we had to work through and some change orders. And so we've advised Waukegan on our experience too with this particular sewer alignment in this area and what they may run into.
That's kind of leverage. I, I love to hear when these collaborative efforts, especially when, you know, we can use that to, the, that grant to pay for a lot of our improvements in, in Clive property right there. Any talk about invasive species, Jim, and, and part of that restoration plan with Stan Tech? Or has that already been done with that, that previous one? Or what's your thoughts?
Well, that'll be part of the first step as they go through here and do, you know, they're going to look at the existing trees. And again, those invasive species would come into play as far as what the existing conditions are out there.
Last question is on that credit banking that you talked about for water retention. Does that tie into the entire Green Belt? I know Pete and I had talked about that. Does that tie into? Pete and I had talked about that. Does that tie into that whole plan right there as far as credit banking for that?
A lot of unknowns associated around that right now. And again, the first step is just to understand the feasibility of if it would even work out here. But yes, theoretically, that would be something that we could use for future city projects if it comes to fruition.
Great. Thank you.
Just a quick clarification, Matt, to something you said. We are going to have all those written formal agreements ironed out before.
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 Construction.
Yep.
I'm not a lawyer up here.
Yes.
Further, further questions? Again, what we're looking for is the resolution. I move a resolution.
Second.
And we've got a second. Further discussion, if not with counsel, please vote. And with clerk, please post that vote. So the resolution with Sand Text for that agreement passes by a vote of five to zero. Jim, now onto the perplexing Meredith Drive.
So bids were received through the department of transportation in March for the project on Meredith Drive and Alice's Road. We talked about the project a couple of months ago. Again, just to refresh your memory, it's a, the Clive piece is a smaller portion of a larger project, multi-year project. And our portion would be the south half of the improvements on Meredith Drive from 167th out to the intersection. And then the south half of those intersection improvements as well. The engineer's estimate was right, the original estimate was right around eight and a half million dollars. Again, with the 2080 agreement and how that cost breakdown shook out. Clive's portion of that project of, based on that estimate would have been about 1.4 million dollars construction cost. Again, as I believe we, you discussed at your last meeting, the, the bids came in significantly higher than the engineer's estimate. The low bid was right at 14 million dollars. Again, looking at the, the cost breakdown there, that equates to roughly a $2 million cost for Clive's portion of the project. So we went from 1.4 to two, not, it's still significant, not as bad as the overall project increase there. Obviously a lot of discussion with, with Urbendale after the bids were received on what the next best steps were. Again, uncertainties on the current climate, they didn't see the benefits in delaying or rebidding. So they did at their April 5th meeting contingent upon our concurrence tonight, award the project to the low bidder. So again, that would be our recommendation at this time. I know there was some previous discussion on the funding levels and how that would be handled. But that would be our recommendation would be to concur with their award for the 13 or the $14 million project.
Follow up on Jim's comments. We have closed on the, on the bond issue and have allocated that premium that we received on the bond issue towards this project to help make up for that short, the shortfall, the, the higher bid.
600,000 on that.
Is 600, 600,000 total, about 450 of that will come from the premium and then other street funds will make up the difference. We'll have a little bit more funds than the 2 million. Of course, there, Urbendale's doing the engineering on it too. So we'll have a little bit more cost than the 2 million, but not much. So we're, we're, the staff is comfortable that we've identified the funding to support this and we would concur with Urbendale staff as we don't think anything will change by rebidding this unfortunately with this environment. So, and it really important to finish that last phase of Meredith. And of course, we're starting down this path now of a lot of improvements in that area. We want to keep that moving forward here.
Five and a half billion dollars is a big lift as far as engineers expenses and what it came in. I get it must be a huge priority for Urbendale to want to move forward that and not rebid it. So.
They have an elementary school right in the middle of this, that street portion going to the north.
That's pushing that. Yep.
Gotcha. Further questions? If not, we're looking for a resolution. The resolution of awarding the bid to the low bidder.
Sorry.
Further discussion? If not with counsel, please vote. And with clerk, please post that vote. That passes by a vote of five to zero. Ben?
Uh, your honor, we would recommend approval of the purchase.
Just need a simple motion here on item nine.
I'm going to prove.
Second.
We do have a motion second for a discussion. If not, with counsel, please vote. And with clerk, please post that vote.
I, I did have to abstain just for the record.
That passes by a vote of four in favor and one abstention. Chief.
Thank you, mayor. Pete's getting us geared up here. We did, um, city leadership did the annual flood tabletop exercise towards the end of March. And this year we did a 100 year flood. That's about 15 and a half feet out here at the interstate for about a, a 1% chance event. What's, um, what's interesting or unique about this level? Okay, thanks. It's pretty challenging because at this level, 114th, 186th and 73rd Street are all underwater. You've got two residential areas that are, that are taking on water. You've got lower 78th and the, the lower Indian Hills area. So a pretty significant event for, for city staff to, to manage. The, um, we always do an after action review and come up with things to work on over the next year. So some things that we identified, we're going to look at. 92nd Court is really a commercial cul-de-sac, which causes some, some evacuation concerns for that area. It also, you know, from a fire perspective, being one way in, one way out causes us some concerns. So city staff is looking at, is there any way for potential access through an easement to the, uh, to the west, kind of towards the old Nebraska Furniture Mart building and whether or not that's, that's feasible and would provide us an added layer of safety. We recognized on number two that we've got some city staff, parks, police, public works that end up working on or near water a lot of times. And, uh, there's a desire for life jackets. So we've already secured those. We've got added life jackets for the safety of personnel. Public Works, as we, this particular level can cause them some issues with water in the building or coming up through sewers. So we're looking at different ways to help protect that, both some of the infrastructure inside of the building as well as trying to, to do different things to stop the water from, from impacting that building. Uh, number four, there's some better modeling of how the floodwaters impact us. So we're going to use that to update our plans from 78th third to 100th Street. Those maps are available at this point. And then as the maps west of 100th Street become available, we'll update those as well. On community sheltering, if some of you remember back in 2018, we had an issue with a lot of people and nowhere to put them. And we kind of gave them run of the police and fire building, which wasn't a really good long-term approach. So right now our plan is to use the Geovinetti Shelter. The city of Urbendale has been very cooperative with that. But with the advent of the Harbach Center, there might be an opportunity there where that shelter is closer and a little easier for us to use. So park staff is, is looking into the viability of that. Pete and I are looking into non-English speaking needs, particularly as we do evacuations. We have a goal of, of, you know, knocking on every door to get everybody's attention if, if we believe we're going to flood. And if we run into non-English speaking, we're looking at some, some different ways to communicate that. One is just simply using translation apps on your phone. Our paramedics use that all the time with patients that don't speak English. Um, and the other thing we want to do is come up with a QR scanning code that basically you show it, it shows a picture of somebody using a QR code. And if somebody that we weren't able to communicate with could see that, they would hopefully then scan that code and that would take them to additional information regarding what was going on. Uh, with the aquatic center, we identified that we may be able to further protect that building at this level with an aqua dam along the, uh, the north side of that. So we're evaluating that. And every year we have numerous updates to phone lists and notification systems and stuff like that. So every year we spend two to three hours going through this and good stuff comes out of it. And we just make our plan a little more robust every year. Any questions on the, the exercise or some of the plan changes that we're working on?
Quick question. So chief, a few years back, we had to do a boat rescue. One of those, but now I know that building's been torn down. But did you guys identify anything like that where we might need to be prepared for that if something like this were to happen?
Yeah, at this particular level, we'll stage a boat north of the creek and south of the creek. So we just use as a default, we use the current fire station as a staging location. And then we use West Des Moines Station by Valley High School is the other location. So we'll always stage at least two boats and call in more if we need them. We've got a list of about 10 boats, which sometimes feels like overkill, but in 2018, when the whole metro was flooding, we were literally down to the last two boats on the list. It was the DNR and the Pleasant Hill Fire Department. Let's tell you, the DNR, those people couldn't have been happier to be in the middle of a, a rescue situation. And what a great resource. Those guys are in boats all the time.
Yeah.
So that night we did 35 rescues by boat.
The top of the list.
Yeah, they were, they were extremely capable. As was Pleasant Hill, they're just far away and normally wouldn't be a first call, but when we needed them, they were, they were here and did a great job for us.
Chief, are you able to use the GIS technology that we're currently utilizing as a city for updated modeling?
Yeah, um, Doug's going to follow up and give the second part of this presentation. He's much more familiar with describing how that works. I have viewed it and it's very impressive, provides us additional levels of detail that are valuable in what we do. Yep.
More still your thunder, Doug.
Any other questions for the chief?
Yeah, one, one quick question on the, uh, the non-English speaking needs. That's great that we're doing that. I was wondering on the QR code scanning piece, is that to provide written materials as to evacuation centers or what, what is kind of the basis for that QR code? Uh, or what's the resource, I guess, that they're, they're providing?
I'm going to rely on my friend Pete here. We're kind of working this together and he's got a little better technological understanding of how that happens.
So the, the hurdle we're trying to overcome is meeting people where they're at with their language skills. The best resource we have at our immediate disposal right now is the language translation tool that's on our website. The idea with the QR codes is that for each of the levels of flooding that we experience, we will create a page that we can hide, but then turn on. And the QR code that we use to display, depending on the event, will then take people to that page once it's open. And it has all of the information about where you go to get shelter, where you could go for sandbagging, all of the things that are really important for folks to share. Then they can use the translation tool that's built into the site to translate all of that text into something they can read. Now, we still have a problem of what about people who aren't literate in any of those languages? In those situations, we're still thinking about what my best, what best practices might be to help get them the right information because our first responders don't have a lot of time in this situation to stay and work with just one family. They got to get to the next household's phone. And, and that's actually, I was heading down that path of, you know, we should try to utilize text to speech engines if we can too. Took a big, thank you, recommendation.
Other questions? If not, Doug?
I have more IT questions for the chief.
I have to keep everybody on their toes.
So slightly different direction here. I'm going to do my best to try to explain this particular circumstance that we're dealing with, but for, for our new members here, the city of Clive is a member of the community rating system, which is a program that we voluntarily work through, which allows our community members that have flood insurance to receive a discount on the cost of the flood insurance because of our demonstrated abilities to properly manage flood planes. We've been doing this for a number of years now and we've worked ourselves up to what is considered a class five. And that provides a 25% discount for the insurance policies in the city of Clive. About 80, $90,000 a year annually in terms of the savings that's accrued because of, of this, this rating that we have. We do anticipate and, and are quite confident in our abilities to get to the class four, which would provide another 5% later this year and into next year. But the big takeaway here is CRS voluntary program. It is something that provides a benefit to policyholders in Clive. And to the tune of 80 to $90,000 on an annualized basis. Clive, as is the case in many ways, is unique. And we have a very unique flood plane management ordinance. One of only a handful of ordinances in the country in which FEMA has granted the ability to have basements in a flood plain. Intuitively, a basement in a flood plain makes zero sense. However, the requirements are you can have a basement in the city of Clive, provided that it is structurally engineered to withstand flooding. So in the late seventies, as we started developing in the Indian Hills area, massive amounts of development in the flood plain, flood maps came into B, tension between builders, city and FEMA. Consensus was reached to allow for this exemption to occur. And those basements principally in Indian Hills were built in a way to withstand flooding conditions. We've been running with that ever since late seventies. No problems. And today, if you wanted to build a house in a flood plain, we can certainly accommodate it, design a structurally sound foundation and knock yourself out. What we have run into is because of our CRS program, they occasionally make changes to the program requirements. In this particular case, they are now making a change in a minimum requirement of the program that was not intentional to eliminate our basement exemption, but in essence, that's what it does. Again, we're only, I think, as I understand it, we are the only community in the CRS program with the basement exemption.
Hold on, Doug.
So, um, again, it's not something that they were, it's not something that they were trying to take away from us. It was simply an unintended consequence of, of what they thought was appropriate new regulations. And I agree with their proposed regulations. I just am not satisfied that it impacts us in this circumstance. That bit of background, what it really distills down to is we have two choices. Uh, again, this is a voluntary program. We can be done with it. The problem is, again, not significantly a problem to the city itself, but it does result in a negative consequence for the residents that are enjoying the premium discount now. So, um, you know, that would be a substantial loss to them if we are not willing to accept the changes to the program requirements and make those adjustments. The other option is to make the adjustments to our ordinance requirements. It in essence eliminates the basement exemption. Probably not a big deal going forward because we honestly, uh, most people don't make the decision to put a basement in a flood plain. That kind of is a thing of the past, if you will. So I don't really see it affecting people in the future. But those existing homes that we have in the Indian Hills area principally that have a basement exemption would be permitted non-conforming. Again, not a big deal today, not a big deal tomorrow. They can keep doing what they're doing with their house. The rub comes in if and when a big flood comes or if a fire destroys or impacts the house or tornado comes through and knocks the house down. Any of those circumstances which create more than 50% damage, it is substantially damaged and they would no longer be able to build that house back unless it meets the new current minimum requirements. So functionally, what that would mean is I've got a house with a basement in Indian Hills substantially damaged. I want to rebuild my house. Great. We'll let you rebuild the house, but you need to fill in the basement and elevate the house a bit. So, um, that's option number two. That affects about 45 property owners. The, the caveat to this is if you went with option two, which would have this potentially adverse effect on 45 property owners, there still is a way out. We would anticipate setting up this revised ordinance to include a variance provision. So if the bad day happens, the house got destroyed, property owner could come and ask for variance to build their house back to the original condition. The Board of Adjustment could grant that, which would be fine. However.
You always have a how, however.
However, the city would then be found to be in violation of its obligations for floodplain management.
For just one house?
Just one. So in essence, we'd be back to option one. Now that's playing a lot of what ifs, playing out a lot of potential variables. But that is in essence an aside to the second option there, which would allow us to keep the discount, minimize the impact to those 45 people that are adversely impacted to a degree, kick the can down the road until such time as one of those homes is substantially damaged and then have to make this ultimate decision.
But option one impacts a lot more.
Option one impacts about 185 current policyholders.
Does that immediately then or within a short amount of time?
It would kick in basically next year's policies.
How was the exemption originally obtained? Do we know that?
Specifically, no. Anecdotally, Clive community, like I said, was developing the Indian Hills area very quickly with the developers out there. Clive had been hit with some relatively significant flooding in that mid to late seventies. FEMA, the state had come in and said, okay, let's, let's come up with flood maps because that was not a thing. Came up with the flood maps, but we already had these subdivisions in place, homes were being built. So the standard rule, which is don't build in the floodplain, had to be reconciled. So the city asked for some consideration, how do we deal with this circumstance? Cause we're not going to tear up these subdivisions. FEMA, and again, exactly how it came to be, I do not know, don't have records. But FEMA basically said, we will give you the exemption. There are a couple of other communities in this circumstance and what we're doing is calling it a study. So we are going to study the effectiveness of these structurally designed basements. I've never seen the study, I've never seen the results of the study. I don't think they probably exist.
Could, could we ask for a new study?
There is a strategy on for option number two that we want to pursue with our federal delegation.
Option, option number two, if you did go that route, you know, and again, I'll suggest it and we would absolutely pursue it, but I would not want you to get your hopes up, which is in essence, go and find a way to appeal or ask for a study or ask for some type of additional consideration. Because we are the only community in this circumstance. Now that's good and bad. Does anybody care about little old Clive? Maybe, maybe not. But it is such a unique circumstance that maybe there's an avenue there. The challenge principally along that concept though, is that this program is volunteer, voluntary. It's a benefit, it's not a regulatory requirement. So I don't know if we'll have success, but it is something that we would certainly look to at least make the question.
So Doug, let me just make sure I'm understanding. So you're saying if we go option two, we maintain the discount for the 180 plus homes? And it only goes away if one of the 45 gets destroyed for some reason and have to rebuild? And then we allow a variance and they do it? So yeah, there's a whole lot of kind of what ifs in there.
Cause there's also the option of not allowing the variance and that house would have to rebuild without a base.
Right, at that point in time, whenever that happens.
So you, a council, a future council could make a decision in that scenario to say.
Well, wouldn't be up to us, it'd be up to the Board of Adjustments, right?
Well, yes, it to allow the variance though. Cause would they be able to rebuild without a variance if they didn't include a basement?
If, if they, if they did not have the basement, they could build it to the minimum requirement, no variance. It's, it's the basement, keeping the basement.
We have no purview over the Board of Adjustments, so if they decide.
That is correct.
If they decide for the variance, then that's on them, right?
So if, if we're talking about variances though, I mean, could we have a variance to allow a third level? Cause I mean, we're talking about, you know, three usable levels of space, right? In a, in a potentially either three or two. Could we allow a variance that would allow them to build further up if they weren't allowed to build down?
That is a possibility, yes. The current set of regulations would allow them to build in essence, two and a half stories above grade up to 35 feet total height. So you could in essence kind of get two and a half stories. If you wanted to go a full third story up, yes, you would likely need a variance for that. And again, maybe that is a reasonable case to be made. It's not something that's being done to me. The ordinance created the circumstance, it is unique, maybe the board would grant that.
And I, I know there's a lot more that goes into that, like what, how does it affect surrounding properties and all that? But it's something we should, I think, consider as well.
So that's the policy issue that we have in front of us. It is something that we don't necessarily have to have a decision tonight. However, our next renewal for the CRS comes up in June or July. And by that time, we have had, we will have needed to declare where we intend to go with this. So if we do intend to keep option one, keep the premiums, then we would obviously then also advance our efforts to get to the class four to provide that additional discount to policyholders. But obviously if we're going to take option two, then we're just gonna kind of pull back and put our resources in other areas.
Doug, we'll see if we can get consensus. I suspect it's option two, does anyone feel we should be doing option one?
No, I'm, I'm good with two.
Michael?
I'm good.
I was confused.
Yeah, I was confused, I.
So. He meant, he meant option.
I'm sorry, did, did I go?
Sorry, option one, we would be give essentially giving up a little bit on the CRS program.
Yes.
And then option two is sticking with it, but then we'd run the risk.
Right.
If there is.
I say for now, I'm, I'm with you. I'd say for now you go to that class four and like, that's a big, that's a significant change. And you know, I don't see a problem. It's like that apartment complex, I mean, why he kept renting underground to people after it flooded and flooded and flooded is crazy. So for us to continue to let people build a basement after a major flood, I think it's the, that's a, that's a big, it hasn't been up in those basements, right? If that comes, that's, that's big.
The, the difference in that circumstance is the apartment you're referring to on 75th Street that had been repetitively flooded in the lower levels. That was not built with a structurally designed floodproofed wall that predated any minimum requirements.
But even if it did, it should not have been rebuilt. I mean, I don't care floodproof wall or not, still coming through the windows, some of the doors and everything else.
That's part of.
Collapsed doesn't mean.
No, 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 flood, floodproof means it will not take water. So any, any of the openings are above the hundred year.
Okay. So have we been clear, Doug?
Option two.
Doug, one quick question, are any of those 45 in the flood buyout so that we could reduce that number at all? Or are they, they're all Indian Hills and?
They're all Indian Hills, Lincoln right in there, right? Right on 92nd, that whole area in there.
Every, everything in the buyout area is principally pre-flood maps. Everything in Indian Hills generally is post-flood map. So they had the benefit of these floodplain regulations. All right, off and running. And there's the rest of the detail that would have helped that. Nope, no, no, whoa, whoa.
They'll have to do it on the laptop.
Yes, lots more. Next part of the, the effort here is on an annual basis, we bring forth the list of hazard mitigation projects for the City of Clive. This is part of our hazard mitigation plan that's required of FEMA of our, of the communities, particularly of those communities that go and ask for federal funding of whatever variety. So in this case, we present this to you on an annual basis, give you an update on the projects that have transpired. And then we don't have any specific projects that are being recommended to be added to this list at the moment. But we will anticipate having some additional projects depending on the discussion that we have at the next session. Quickly, we've had progress in a number of areas around the flood mitigation on University Boulevard. As you're well aware, some minor improvements to the berm, the addition of a berm on 75th Street, some changes in the storm sewer plumbing over there. Certainly the buyouts, certainly some improvements in floodplain mapping and certainly some acquisitions, both in terms of floodplain areas as well as flood prone properties themselves. So quite a bit of action this year, still a lot of work to do. And like I said, no additional projects at this moment. Any questions on these broad hazard mitigation projects?
Any questions for Doug? If not, move right along.
Saving money on font here, Mayor.
I, I assume that you read it in the back.
Well, one thing though, to point out on that, some of these, Doug, correct me if I'm wrong, but some of these are intentionally described very broadly so that they can be applicable as we learn more about specific types of incidents. Sometimes that's communication, sometimes that's actually dealing with geography and spaces in the city.
Yes, that is absolutely correct that to be able to make an ask for federal funds, the project has to be on the list. But it is easier for us to be fairly generic and broad and over, overbroad in certain circumstances so that we can get all of the projects that we'd like potentially funded. One of those particular projects then is the flood prone property buyout program. For those of you again, haven't been with us that long, this thing started in 18 after the floods, last flood, the decision was made that rather than continue this flood rebuild flood cycle, we needed to figure out a way to get out of that. Really in this particular neighborhood, the only way to get out of that is going to be through property acquisitions, the removal of the flood risk properties. We started that program again, just after the floods in 18. We are now in phase three of that program. We have accomplished the acquisition and nearly the demolition of 14 of the properties. The yellow highlighted properties have been acquired and demoed. The one property in orange on 78th has been acquired and would be demoed later this year or early next year. And then we are also working on purchase agreements for two additional residential properties that would close out the phase three program. So everyone that had indicated that they had flood damage from the 18th flood that we had prioritized on our list, with the exception of Atchison Auto Works, we will have acquired every property that was on that list. So if you will, mission accomplished. So that would bring us to the end of the flood prone property buyout program. It does not solve the entire riddle of this area itself. And that's what leads us into this next piece, which is really an attempt here to just give you a bit of background and a little bit of advanced information prior to our next meeting. We will be talking about the next evolution of the flood mitigation program for the University Boulevard neighborhood. So now we're not just talking about the flood buyout program from 2018. We've now had the opportunity to look comprehensively at what are all the ramp, all the possibilities for flood mitigation to resolve this problem that we have in University Boulevard. Specifically, what I want to talk about tonight is, is just to make sure that we're all very clear on the why of that flood mitigation program. We'll talk a lot more about the how at the next meeting, but I wanted to make sure that we're clear on the why. Most of you have been around for, for flood on Walnut Creek. They're again occurring every three or four years. This is year four, so we'll, we'll hope that we don't see it in this, this interval, but it's possible. Just to give you some flavor again of what that flood is going to look like. This is simulation of the current floodplain for Walnut Creek. Right in the middle is 86th Street, kind of University and Swanson run rate through the diagonal. That approximately was the 18th flood. So you can see the impact in the University Boulevard neighborhood pretty significantly. The big thing here is this, what we have seen is what we would call probably the 30 year or the 40 year flood. The 30 or the 40 year flood.
I just didn't think we ever projected for that big hundred year.
The, the flood maps really didn't get updated until just a few years ago. So categorizing the floods in terms of their recurrence interval, it really didn't change much. The more significant issue is, again, that's what we've seen on a relatively frequent basis. That's not what we have to plan for. So just finish out the run, puts it out to the hundred year flood, which is the event that Rick had talked about in terms of our pre-planning exercises. As you can see, you know, we're going to have issues kind of in many places in the community. University Boulevard being the most hard hit, but certainly the Indian Hills and the Swanson area are going to be, be impacted as well. There's, yes, there's, there's, and again, we've seen that type of impact with the, with the events that we've had. Not obviously to that degree, but it significant in that neighborhood. The real kicker here, you know, again, is that we haven't seen the hundred year flood. We haven't seen this, hopefully we won't see this. But if we simply reflect on what happened in 2018, just a few miles from us in the four mile watershed area. If that eight, nine, 10 inches of rain fell a few miles to the west in the Walnut Creek watershed, that's what we'd be dealing with. So it's not like this is something that is just completely hypothetical. It's realistic that we're likely to see this at some point. The, the other thing that I will mention is all of the work that we talk about at your next meeting and this model is based on, this is the current condition. So this does not reflect upstream development that impacts in the watershed. It does not reflect any amount of climate change. So this is simply the historical rainfall patterns put into this current landscape. Development's going to continue. Certainly the rainfall intensity, duration, frequencies are not getting less for us. So that's something just to keep in mind. The good news is for University Boulevard area, it doesn't matter. It's so bad there, the future conditions don't make a difference. This is the, the new modeling and yes, I could run the simulations and all that fun fancy stuff, but I just did a quick screenshot to kind of give you a glimpse of this University Boulevard area that we'll be specifically talking about. The modeling that we're able to do now is significantly advanced. It allows us to have data that is much greater fidelity, much greater. much greater fidelity, much greater much broader depth of of information that's available. We're able, and what you're seeing in that image, much granular, much more granular information around how flood and water react on the actual landscape. What you're seeing is the movement of water across the landscape itself, the little white lines that are showing you how the water is interfacing with a building, how it's interfacing with the street or how it's interfacing with the berm. So we're able to have depths of water impact, we're able to have velocity. So we understand what those impacts on buildings are. We're again able to understand how that water is going to hit a building face and and go around it, if you will. So this information is is substantially better for us to be able to do flood mitigation planning work. What it does is gives us the ability to do this, which is a simply representation of the buildings in the University Boulevard area and what the impacts on those buildings will be when that hundred year flood comes in. And what I'm doing is giving you a glimpse of the buildings in green and yellow principally. Those buildings are all going to have flooding impacts. The number, although again, it's probably hard to see on top of each of those buildings, there's the top number which indicates the depth of floodwater in the buildings. The lower number, I'll tell you all about that next time. Don't worry about it. The big, the big thing for tonight is the depth of those floodwaters in those buildings. And the really important aspect isn't just, you know, one of the homes that has thirteen feet of water or the Briggs building that has eight feet of water in its building. The important aspect here is those buildings that are going to have three or more feet of water in them. And you don't have to count, I'll tell you, it's about half of the buildings in this area are going to have three or more feet of water in them. And what's important about that is when we run the damage assessments on these, at that level, you're starting to get to a point where the buildings have received more than fifty percent damage. You're getting the water up that high, you're getting into mechanical, you're getting into electrical, you're getting into some structural issues. And as we just kind of previously talked about, substantial damage is a very, very important key in this discussion. Any of those buildings that have more than fifty percent damage, so the damage is more than fifty percent of their pre-flood value, they are substantially damaged and the city has an obligation to ensure that there is no reconstruction. Buildings flooded, substantially damaged, you can't go back in it.
You say we have an obligation, but do we, can we, we have the ability to bar, like someone's house goes down, they want to rebuild with their insurance. We can stop them legally?
We we are obligated. Federal government, the city has chosen to be a part of the National Flood Insurance Program, NFIP. The city has chosen to do that because that is the only way a Clive property owner can obtain federally backed flood insurance. And in the case of Clive with almost three hundred properties in the floodplain, most of them have standard or federally backed mortgages. Most of those mortgages require flood insurance. So if the city is not a standing member of the National Flood Plan, National Flood Insurance Program, property owners can't get flood insurance. If you can't get flood insurance, yes, there is some private insurance that you can start to get, but universally speaking, federally provided flood insurance is the way that that is being handled for the most part.
But Doug, does that only apply to federally backed mortgages? Because the federally backed mortgage is only about ten to fifteen percent of of the market.
Yes, but many of the other mortgages you're talking about end up in that system.
Okay.
Right? So it's actually close to ninety percent that have a touch on the federal.
Okay.
Is this an obligation to only residential?
No.
Or commercial?
Any structure in the floodplain. So again, you can rebuild it. You have to build it, rebuild it in accordance with the current codes. So again, let's just pick the Briggs, the one in the middle. That building is going to have almost seven feet of water in it. It gets substantially damaged. Sure, I want to rebuild it. Great. Figure out a way to lift it seven and a half feet in the air or bring in dirt seven and a half feet to build that building. So it doesn't prohibit you from rebuilding, but it requires you to rebuild in accordance with current standards.
Doug, with that being said, I'll say the catastrophic flooding happens. These stipulations kick into it. City of Clive has the obligation, we enact that. Then what from from the owners? Do they, do they sell the property? I mean, I, 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 I mean, they can't sell it? The city take over? Work that through for us, if you would.
Happily. The reason that I bring this up and want to make sure that you're crystal clear on it, there are several reasons why flood mitigation in this University Boulevard area makes sense for us to consider. I'll give you a couple of reasons. One of them is this problem. When the bad day comes in Clive, this area is underwater and you've got twenty five people, twenty five homeowners, twenty five businesses underwater freaking out. The next thing they're doing is trying to figure out, well, how am I going to get myself back? But we're going to say, sorry, you're not going to be able to get back here anytime in the near future. And if you do decide to stay here, you're going to have to radically change your your building and your site configuration. We're in a situation where we're dealing with protecting our own infrastructure, managing life and safety, trying to assist some property owners with with personal property management. We are not going to be able to manage these twenty five folks. There's going to be others in Clive in that circumstance. And I promise you that under the pressure of being wet, bad outcomes are going to happen. It will be substantially better for the community, again, in my opinion, and as we'll present to you later. Doing the hard work now in the dry is going to be substantially better for the community, better for property owners than dealing with that bad day when everybody's wet and freaking out.
This is the what's linked to the
It was underwater along that map. I mean,
you're all the way up past.
It's way past more than this.
So so that area, like I said, has flood risk. It's a little different animal because again, those, most of those properties were built with some benefit of flood maps, flood regulations, again, these these structural foundations and basements and elevations, things of this nature. I'm not going to minimize that it's going to be a bad day for those people, too. It's just not going to be catastrophic. Catastrophic.
But for the chief, the danger's there too, right? I mean, you're down here and you're up there, talking about boats. You now have two major scenes.
Yes. Again, no, no arguments about that. The bad day is going to be a bad day.
And that's why we do our planning, because we have to find all the resources it takes to evacuate both those areas at the same time.
So so this is, again, one of the layers of the why. It for me is one of the bigger buys because doing the hard work now is going to result in substantially better outcomes. The other part of this is, you know, again, whether or not you want to say that we have a duty, and some may say an obligation to ensure life safety, reduction of property damage and impacts. This is certainly one another reason. When you have three, four, seven, twelve, thirteen and a half feet of water on these structures, there's, there's a high probability that that again, there's going to be bad outcome for for individuals. So that is certainly something that we're very concerned with. The third level, third layer really of why I think we should be seriously considering, again, some very significant investments and advancements in in our flood mitigation is because of this. And what this is is an opportunity, in my opinion, to take what is persistently a problem and potentially catastrophic and turn it into something that actually is useful and valuable and may provide actually quite a bit of hope for this part of the community in my minds. And this is something that we can choose to do. It is something that is within our power to resolve those structures that are at flood risk. Yes, it will take time and effort and work to do so, but I do believe that the outcome can be something that is advantageous and creates a better opportunity for the area. I would go as far as even to say, and as I've talked to my colleagues about this, it will probably take some time for for most people to understand and appreciate the opportunity here. Because all you see is is old buildings and and infrastructure and the potential for flooding. But I do see that this has very much the opportunity to be the next great neighborhood in Clive. One that is fully, fully integrated into the green belt. Not not just the green belt passes you by, but puts the green belt in the middle of this neighborhood. I see this as an opportunity to take a neighborhood, unlike anything else that we have in the community. Again, we're we're getting better stormwater management in our in our neighborhoods. But this is centering stormwater management as a foundational element to that neighborhood. I think this also gives us an opportunity to create this this neighborhood that is an amazing family living opportunity that is absolutely connected with nature based wellness. And you know, again, it may be hard to to think through that if we drop all of these buildings and lose all that tax base. But I do truly think that, again, the long term outcome here is something where we have a neighborhood that is producing a fiscal condition for the community that is in excess of what we currently have. So I do see, and I do believe that there are great opportunities for this to turn this into something that is very much a success for the community. I'm not sugarcoating it. It is going to be hard to do. It is going to take time to do, is going to take consistent and persistent effort, and it's probably going to take longer than you and maybe me are in the leadership position, other than Mayor Edwards. It may take longer than than our active tenure in this effort. But we do see that this is an opportunity. The more that I have dug in, the more I'm convinced that it is realistic, and we'll talk more about the how at the next meeting. But I did want to take the time to to again, set the stage to make sure that we're very clear on the why. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have at this particular point, but we will, like I said, come to you at the next meeting, talk much more about the overall flood mitigation planning and the opportunities that we think are there to really change the circumstances from being flood prone to something that again is a is a a community asset.
Questions?
So Doug, I attended the neighborhood meeting that you had last week on on this topic with with some of those neighborhood owners, and I'm assuming some business owners were were maybe on that as well. And you did a nice job in kind of, you know, laying out the plans and making sure they all knew that the buyout itself was was completely optional, and you reiterated that multiple times. I guess my question based off of this presentation, the consequences of that hundred year flood are quite severe. I didn't sense that tone at the neighborhood meeting. Is this kind of kind of realistic information being communicated to them at an individual level that, hey, here's the map, here's your house, you got thirteen feet of water in this instance, and we can't let you rebuild? Right? Is that being communicated to these homeowners?
Yes. Every conversation that I've had now with property owners in this area, and I haven't in in the course of this project, there's forty three properties. I've not had forty three conversations, but I probably have had well over twenty. And I probably caught most of the other resident or most of the other property owners somewhere along the lines. It is absolutely communicated, but it's 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 so abstract for most people that it's, yes, I understand, I heard you. I don't know that I understand it or believe you. But yes, it is a critical issue. We try to reiterate it, we try to say it in different ways. But ultimately, if we decide to move forward with this broader flood buyout within this university area, it again becomes the why, but it it it's less important to a degree. We kind of, to a degree, need to move past that and talk about how do we get it accomplished? That may speak to more of the reason of why somebody might want to choose earlier than than waiting, you know, and running out the risk. And and we also talk to people about, you know, what they can do on an interim basis, you know, to try to reduce some of those risks and some of those impacts and preplan and make sure that you're ready and have alternative means to to accommodate it. But no, I don't believe that people fully comprehend the the significance of this risk.
Does this plan take into account FEMA restrictions on funding?
Yes. We we have been I I was half joking at the beginning where this neighborhood is so bad in terms of the flood risk that it opens us up for many choices in terms of funding and opens us up into many choices of scenarios of how we package properties and how do we phase the takedowns? So we have gone through that quite a few different ways. Again, I don't want to 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 take all the time, but
I love them, Doug, I love them.
The the big message is we have gone through and figured out a way to be as absolutely flexible as we possibly can to meet individual property owners' needs is probably the best way I can explain it.
At some point, though, we need to say pause. I mean, they're not willing to come along smaller, you know, residential properties and stuff. Need to jump and free up some land, just some larger purchases, right? You know, you're the individual owning a commercial building, take Atchison, wherever. And you don't have a choice, right? Like, you can't just get up and leave. That's your investment. That's that's business, everything, and you're not getting anything. You know, we can sell our house, but we now have the proceeds to go buy another house. They're walking away with us saying, we never should go there. Unless we, and I think they have some doobie as well to go chase federal funding if they can find it on their own or have you buy out their business or the property. But when you start pulling some money and buying some of those properties out, that's, that's what they're going to do, because without that side of the street, all of this is forgotten. You don't knock off that commercial side, the south side. And you can't do any of this.
But but we'll be coming back to you. Next council meeting is no longer simply talking about the flood prone property buyout program, which is residential based. We are talking about Is no longer simply talking about the flood-prone property buyout program, which is residential based. We are talking about. The entirety of this neighborhood area of fifty-some acres. Of buildings, both residential, commercial, and multifamily that have flood risk. We're no longer. Caring about the specific type. We're simply saying a structure that has flood risk, let's mitigate it.
I'm happy to see HCR.
High-density residential, high-density residential.
So like I said, uh, more, more to come on this. Happy to answer any of the questions, but um, like I said, we're, we have plenty of time to, to get into it next time.
Any other questions for Doug? Uh, before we move into Pete's report, which I assume will take more than a minute.
Five minutes, that's all you got.
Uh, does anyone feel like they benefit from taking a five-minute recess?
I would.
We'll be in recess until eight fifteen. Like uh, reconvene the council meeting after a short recess and we'll pick up with Pete on the Water Resources Master Plan.
Thank you, Your Honor. One moment while I pull up our presentation materials.
Like an MRE or something to get me through this. You guys don't even know what MREs are.
Feels ready to eat.
I'd turn back into me if I.
Yeah, right.
Snickered right now.
Well, we don't want you to turn, turn back into yourself.
Got that joke, I got that. Okay, so by way of transition, um. It's very proud to be here tonight to talk about this Water Resources Master Plan. We've been working on it now for about eighteen months, coming up on two years. That way, we've, we've been walking um, hand to hand with our partners at HDR and they've done wonderful work. Building off what you just heard from Doug. There are many, many stories, many, many uh, moments, many, many studies that the city has done over the course of its. Existence, trying to understand how we live with this amazing asset that is Walnut Creek and the Clive Green Belt. Sometimes that brings us challenges like Doug, Doug, Doug just described, sometimes it creates opportunities. The Water Resources Master Plan was initiated so that we could start to weave together those threads. Better than we even had in the past, write the next chapter. In what Clive's water story is going to be and prepare ourselves, building off of other studies as well. To have a more optimistic water future for Clive for the next decade, the decade after that, and so on and so forth. The plan itself is amazingly multifaceted. We talk about flood risk. We talk about. Uh, amenities and neighborhoods. We talk about things that individual property owners can do. We talk about the finances and the structure of the stormwater utility. So this is very wide-ranging. It's also though, with its massive scope. Something that we also need to be prepared to continue adapting, continue to live with and improve over time. So think of this as a chapter in our novel, not the end of the book. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Stephanie to review some of the major policy decisions that were made in the course of drafting this plan. And talk about some of the other programmatic changes that we're suggesting, and then I'm going to pick up and start showing you some of the things that we're doing right now. To implement on that vision that you all really crystallized in the course of creating this plan.
Two hours? All right, I accept. All right, going back to the beginning of, of when we got started, our goal was, uh, this, this statement is taken from some. Our, um, very early documents, but the surface water in Clive should be treated as a valuable resource and amenity. Like any resource though, there is a need for thoughtful water management so we can soak it in, clean it, convey it safely and use it judiciously. By doing so, we will create resilient infrastructure, beautiful neighborhoods, healthy natural spaces. And strong stakeholder relationships that deliver great value to the Clive community. I wanted to get back to this, uh, just to remind you where we were when we first started. Obviously, as, as Pete talked about, a few of those different topics we visited over this project. Um, I, I really do think we've done a good job of addressing a lot of those initial goals. So our process through the Water Resources Master Plan, this should be a familiar slide to you. Uh, but as, as we've gone through, you, we've had multiple checkpoints to make sure that we are incorporating your, uh, opinions and feedbacks on, on the best path forward. So just to kind of revisit, as, as we've worked through this, our first. Um, objective was to address the utility program management. So we did that snapshot of what is the current uh, operations and how are things currently taking place as they relate to the structure? So the, the staffing and the objectives attached to those, the finances and vision. Next, we started diving into the analysis. So with that evaluation and assessment, we first started with BMPs. Um, and then worked through some of those large-scale uh, flood storage projects. And answering those questions of, of which BMPs deliver the greatest value and which storage projects are worthwhile considering going forward. After um, we went through that, those modeling and analyses, we started going through the prioritization. So you'll remember that we had those exercises of trying to define what were those weighted values and how do we best reflect um. A framework so that we can compare to uh, maybe dissimilar looking projects on, on paper, but make sure that they have the same. Uh, rubric applied to them as far as how they are performing and meeting the goals of, of the city and council. So uh, with those, that infrastructure, we were able to go through and prioritize. How those, those, those capital improvement projects performed. Uh, in this as well, we did look at a few different things related to the sustainable value assessment. So going through that analysis of. How do we quantify benefit and what does that look like, as well as revisiting the rate structure and the potential possibilities there? Finally, with our recommendations, we started building out what are those prioritized actions and in what order should they take place? And how are we going to present these different topics and share them with the public? And then finally, uh, we worked and focused on those internal tools as, as Pete was describing. That this will be um, revisited and adapted and it should, um, you know, as we continue to improve, the, the bar will move as well. So that the next challenge that we addressed, wanted to have the tool set up that we're ready to, um, you know, do that annual revisiting. And the tools um, that we developed were the Key Performance Indicator Dashboard and as well as some of the educational tools. Um, on our website. So completed analysis, I, I kind of touched on this, but um, we completed that BMP benefit screening. We went through that analysis, that modeling analysis to know not only the flood stages throughout the city, um, in the Walnut Creek watershed. But also the fi- associated financial benefit of, um, if those projects were to go forward, what would the impact be? Um, we began with a list of over three hundred capital recommended capital improvement projects and working with staff. Were able to go through um, and really refine that list to make sure that those, um, that we were going through the prioritization. Were those that really did carry the, the greatest merit and had the greatest likelihood of, of moving forward. Um, all of those that. Were included in that final CIP list, um, have made it through our prioritization. They may not be in the top twenty, but they have been ranked and scored and those. Um, are available in the prioritization, prioritization tool. We considered and evaluated three different um, rate structures of how to. Uh, collect the stormwater fees and, and what that structure should look like as it's applied to different uh, accounts and, and users. And then we established uh, those tools there on the bottom for the story map, the prioritization where you guys helped us with those values. The economic evaluation tool, um, of being able to adaptively adjust um, those metrics over time. And then the annual performance indicator dashboard. To revisit the key policy decisions, and we'll go through a few things here for the key policy, key program, and then a few things that um, will include. Will be included for further study. But the big policy decisions we've made through this plan are to change the stormwater. Utility residential rate structure, and we finalized um, which, which um, was the preferred alternative. We established the Water Resources Grant Program Framework and spent a lot of time discussing um. How, how we wanted to create that and how we wanted to create um, that relationship with the participants to encourage them and direct them in the way. That we wished. We um, had a policy decision to create a natural resources team to identify, to address. A few of the gaps, um, as well as some of the growth areas that we'd like to move into regarding ground green stormwater infrastructure. And that crossover between parks and public works and um, a little bit of that space of, of how to address some of that growing uh, workload. We also decided to improve the uh, inspection data collection and, and have some longer-term goals of how. To use that data uh, to better frame our projections for um. Operations and maintenance related to that, the outcome of that inspection data. And then finally, uh, that schedule of, of how to execute an enhanced um, inspection program. Uh, which, which really did, was aimed to address some of our differences in public. Public amenities and private amenities and, and that crossover of how to ensure that we are um, performing as, as high as those. Uh, control measures we're expected to. Our program decisions, uh, we chose to expand three things along the top here, so the inspection and condition data collection. The incentive program, and then to expand public education and outreach more broadly. We also, um. Decided that w- we will use this framework going forward to evaluate the proposed um, capital improvement projects and be able to, to see those scores. Side by side, uh, we decided to revisit performance annually. So we have these metrics decided of, of what we would like to be working towards and we will have kind of that grade revisited of, of how well did we. Did we um, improve in meeting our goals. And that really rose out of, um, in the previous plans and studies that had been completed. We saw there were a lot of really great recommendations and we wanted to ensure that as we get to, you know, a, a, a change of the calendar that we're able to look back. And measure that progress year-to-date and set um, with that adaptive management, what's, what's coming up next and how do we keep moving the needle? And then finally, uh, utilizing that Econ H two O tool that, that we had shared with some of those graphs and balances of how best to. Balance our rate increases with our expenditures for the increases of the programs that we place a high value in as well as a capital improvement. Um, investments to get things constructed. So finally here, a few of the things that we know we're very interested in, but are going to require a, a bit more of. A, a roundtable or, or coordination and collaboration of figuring out the best path forward. Those are listed here. Um, one of them is to establish the payment in Lua program. That would complement the post-construction stormwater ordinance, and we, this is really aimed at the sub-watershed compliance approach. Um, with Harbach obviously being the, the pilot, pilot and the example of how we would intend to extend that out to other areas and, and other. Other um. Watershed areas in that uh, reconstruction program. The next is to reevaluate the potential for stormwater utility bonding opportunities. As we went through our Econ H two O exercise, we did not include um, any bonding. We uh, held that same. Process going through that there, there, um, that that was going to be our policy, but we'd like to revisit that and evaluate if there is a time or place where that. Might be uh, something we're interested in. The third there is um, within the watershed, that ongoing engagement and recognizing, you know. Some of the higher uh, scoring projects that we evaluated, particularly along Alice's Road and those four larger basins. The, the work and, and the relationship with those watershed partners to have the regionally significant flood mitigation projects. Is something we're still interested in pursuing. The last one there is to establish a wetland or habitat credits. With the long-term goal of eventually creating an umbrella Clive Credit Bank, and this would just allow us a lot more flexibility of how to. How, how to better account for the benefits that are associated with um, that habitat creation and, and wetland development. Or redevelopment. Pete, would you like to?
Sure.
Me too.
Okay.
Well, let's go and stay up here, because before we move on, I want to make sure that if there are any questions about some of the big programmatic changes that have been proposed or already actually in this case has been implemented or the policy changes, excuse me, policy changes, does this all square with your recollection of the work that was previously done and shared?
So on the annual performance review for these programs, do you have like a objective scoring system that you're using or is it just kind of subjective that, oh yeah, it works?
Yeah.
That's the dashboard.
Yeah. So, excuse me. So, so there is a dashboard that we lined up with the six pillars. So they do correlate with that, that we have I, three or four different ways that we're measuring our achievement for each of those of how well we're addressing them. Some of them are percentage based, some of them are number based, some of them are unique visits to the website, you know, that's aimed at public education. But each of those are a numerical value that have a, a direct prompt of how well did we address this goal? And we'll have that number score.
And our proposed timeline for sharing that lines up with when we're doing a lot of the CIP prep work. And when we're going into those discussions about what utility rates might need to look like as we go into the next budget. So September, October, the benefits then of also from the output from strategic planning that happens in August. Sort of the state of water in Clive is what I'm imagining here.
Could you give a brief explanation of a Clive credit bank? And talk a little bit as, as we discussed previously on how the Green Belt in entirety could fit into that.
Yes, sir. So this is building on what Jim shared earlier, and I want to really credit Doug with really pushing us to think about what this could be, even in the absence of another example in Clive of a whole umbrella type bank. There are a number of other cities that are working with source point pollution that comes like out of water treatment plant that right now are able to do projects that get them credits that can then count against their, what they need to meet for their discharge requirements with their source point coming out of those spots. We don't have something quite like that here in Clive, but we could be a place where people who do have that need could come and buy from us. Or if we have to meet our own requirements for say a street reconstruction project or another state, state development, city development, where we then need to use credits or get credits, if we've already built that credit bank, we could then use it ourselves. So that is our vision. It is, I'd say nascent, it's at the very beginning stages. And there aren't a whole bunch of communities in Iowa that have used it in a robust way. But like a lot of things with water, Clive needs to out of necessity be on the front edge of these things and push the envelope.
This is like a wetland bank.
One part of it, yes.
I mean, the fluid with that, it's an internal one for ourselves. So we're going to build the bank. Bank, right? And then we're going to also allow people to deposit into that bank and then use it for ourselves.
I don't know if we would let other people deposit into the bank. We would be creating the credits for our own use or potentially for others to buy from us.
Do something in my property and I don't need it.
It's something for us to consider if we could open it up. I, I'm not even sure the mechanism would allow for that more complex, everybody kicking in.
I don't want to get in, dude, you got a big project here. Just let's, let's not get dialed in that you got a lot more to go there. So.
Hey.
Be here all night.
We'll move efficiently. Some of the things that are already underway. So we just discussed how we had updated the stormwater utility cash flows and anticipated rate structure changes. We're already looking at how the utility is going to kick into the CIP for the next five years. We'll continue to adapt that number actively recruiting for our next water resources engineer. We're recruiting households actively now for our soil quality restoration cost share program and the Harbach collaboration as well. Our annual BMP inspections, we've made great progress on that during the months when we didn't have to plow through the snow, but also weren't looking at a bunch of green vegetation. And that's now something we have to sort of pause on until we have our new engineer in place. And then finally prepare our assets for community education and I would like to share some of those with all of you right now. So we have gone live with our story map. I'm going to go ahead and change screens so you can all go through this with me real quick.
You look very familiar.
They're good fishermen. So one of the things we figured out when we did our last resident survey and also talking with folks at the course of this process, project is that we have residents who are opposed to water resources, best practices, but they're definitely not top of mind. And they don't even know what the practices are that would be most appropriate for their property. So our goal is to improve the education and inspire them to care about this the way that all of us do. This is powered by our Esri environment, our maps, and then we pair it with text. I'm not going to go through all of it, but you'll see there's a little latency here, but there's quite a bit of sort of dynamic movement through this as you go through. Things like sliders showing you what the development has looked like over time, just with Clive outlined in red, but showing also the entire watershed because Clive always has to take a watershed approach. We talk about land use changes and then similar with the animation Doug showed you, we show what it looks like as the water starts flowing through Walnut Creek. We talked then about why we start to see some of this behavior in our watershed. It has lots to do with how we hit the surfaces, with surfaces it hits, and then how we convey that water once it hits that surface. Does it run off fast or does it get infiltrated and held where it's at? Now, I don't want to mistake anybody here. When the bad day of Clive comes, that's a bad day in Clive. We are not going to build a system here that's going to be able to handle that. That's why we have neighborhoods that Doug's describing where the best thing to do is to get people and property out of harm's way. But any event, when we have water coming into Clive is an opportunity for us to do things where we catch the water and infiltrate it where it's at using hopefully many green practices so that the dirty water doesn't get down to this amenity we love, Clive Green Belt. And that even those small events don't end up doing damage through erosion and other degradation of property. So we talk about, this is very 101 level for people who maybe don't know anything about it right now. They don't know those pipes are down there. So we have great illustrations here of how that works. And then some of the negative effects of fast-moving water. Then we talk about how we can slow it down. It features some of the things that we've already done here in Clive and the other things that we'd like to do in the future. Now, most of these that we're lifting up are some of the things that can only be done sort of at a city level. But we are always making that connection for residents from where they are in their watershed and their opportunity to be good stewards of it as well, through a rain garden, through a rain barrel. And that's right now where we end, where we talk right now sort of as a placeholder about using the, all the different rainscaping practices people can do on their own property with the rain campaign. But you can see here, we have our signs ready to go so we can start promoting what's going on with our massive $100,000, probably at the end of the day, over $200,000 project for soil quality restoration cost share in Clive. I was not. Oh my goodness. All right. So let me go back to where we were here. Okay. So there's our sign. We're ready to go. April is now when we are starting to gauge interest, build interest. May is when we will open up our application period. We will be doing our soil quality restoration test plot. It's Campbell Recreation Area, starting Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, weather dependent. We will be actually putting the top soil down. This is an application. If you get questions about this from folks where we're saying aeration first, followed by half inch to three quarters inch with compost on top, integrated either with rake or if it's blown on it, you just find its way in. But the aeration is key, helps that compost get down into the soil. And then you also then want to make sure your grass is ready to sort of receive it. So you give it a nice tight cut with that lawn, so it doesn't get pushed over by the compost, but it can actually keep growing up through it. Our time lapse video is going to show how over the course of a couple of weeks, all the compost sort of disappears and you start to see that grass again. So people can feel like, all right, I understand what I'm going to get. But the real selling point for folks may not be the benefits of managing water better and everything that happens with the Green Belt. It's going to be that picture in the middle. This is a really cost effective way to get a more beautiful lawn. We're going to use that as part of our storytelling as well, so we can recruit. Recruiting is the biggest obstacle we've heard from other communities, but I feel like we're really off to a great start. And our partners at Polk County have, have been wonderful to work with as well as Iowa Stormwater Education Partnership and IDALS. It's going to be a busy, busy spring and recruiting and summer of recruiting and fall of applications. I'll have more information for all of you on that. We have a lot of opportunities also down to integrate other storytelling platforms into this work, not just about soil quality restoration, but more broadly about good water stewardship. So you may have seen the fun story we had with the baby goats this spring. When we tell our story, we decided we wanted to use the goats to encourage people to look out for the soil quality restoration opportunities. And we've already recruited about five folks just from that story alone, and I'm sure we'll fill up our ranks quickly. Harbach, this is the area where we have properties that are eligible to participate in our full 100% city pays for it practices. Our preferences to go with soil quality restoration and trees. These are practices that we feel like are more set it and forget it than like a rain garden would be, but we're not opposed to that. The council gave us clear direction that they want us to present multiple options to the property owners that want to participate. Happy to say that the school Crestview Elementary is interested. And also that our friends at Glacier Properties have shown some initial interest potentially as well. And they've got a lot of places where we might be able to do some of these things. Finally, this is one of the early drafts we had of the flyers to the Harbach neighborhood to encourage participation. We're actively creating more assets as well. I expect most of the recruiting activity over for our Harbach partners to be more into the summer months and fall because we have multiple years to get this work done. Whereas with the IDAL grant, we want to get all hundred of those practices installed this fall. Whether we're talking about IDALS or Harbach, those are two monster projects that far exceed what we thought we were going to be able to get into in our first year of engaging residents in cost share or in grant programs. We also though, in starting in FY23, have $10,000 scheduled to come out of the utility for a city à la carte type program. My recommendation to council would be, let's make sure we do those first two things right with the SQR from IDALS and Harbach. And then if we don't get to a full-blown $10,000, you kind of à la carte grant program that's funded by the city this year, those dollars would still be available for the council just to use at their discretion to help keep advancing, getting practices in the ground. Because the measuring stick at the end of the day is practices in the ground.
So Pete, just to clarify, it's 100%. So if you get somebody to volunteer, contractors are going to come in, air a, do everything, homeowner won't have to do anything. Is that right?
The IDALS funded program is designed to be simple. It's a cost share though. It's not going to be 100%. So the way that we're thinking of it right now, and we have to actually go out and after we've recruited here and do some double checking by actually going out and measuring all these lawns as well. But we are thinking at $1,000 cap are up to 50% of your projects. So some of the projects will come in less than that $1,000 cap. Some might come right up to that $1,000 cap based on how many square feet we're going to be treating with compost. That model worked well for Polk, Polk City. You could see then how with the $100,000 grant, we can pretty easily get to 100 households.
Citywide cost share, Harbach, 100% share. Is we have a compliance obligation in Harbach because of the street reconstruction to, to do. But that's going to be the trick, right? Is not getting confused on those two stories.
Big lawns on Harbach.
Yeah. We're going to cover down the hill to Drake. Huge lawns at 100%.
Now we have a limit. We only, we only need to get to a certain level and we only have so much stormwater. We've set aside a budget for the Harbach project to get us compliance. And we've estimated how much SQR needs to happen to get there. Once we're there, we're there. If we're able to get a little bit of benefit and, and build up a reserve, we're going to have other streets reconstructed in that neighborhood.
What are we looking at for a dollar figure for SQR for, for this year?
I'd say 15, between 15 and 25 cents per square foot.
You're talking costs, how much the city going to spend on it?
Correct. So the city's output on this will be the $100,000 that we received in our grant. Matched then by an almost equivalent amount by the property owners to choose to participate. And then there will be some administrative and our test plot costs and our storytelling costs as well, but.
Quarter, quarter, you think, or?
The Harbach portion will be 100,000-ish.
If you include the Harbach portion of it over a couple of years here, then we're going to push over $300,000 of work that would be done.
A lot of, a lot of properties, which will be really good.
Yep. So this is a big, big storytelling moment for us. Very excited about that.
You can't put a price on good quality compost.
To that point, our friends at Metro Waste are already aware that we're going to have a potentially a really big need. And yep, we did some good work there. And second,
It's on fire.
Well, that's right. Second, there's a research component to all this as well, because we're saying to folks that we want to try and meet our own obligations as a city by doing soil quality restoration. But there's a lot of variables anytime you're talking about different types of elevations, dirt, compaction. So we need to get a chance to study what we're doing while we're doing, while we have this moment. So I've engaged with ISWAP, Polk County, and hopefully soon with Iowa State University to bring in researchers who were then going to be able to walk with us to get pre-application, post-application, and then six, 12, even after that, further down the line assessments of how well is this doing it sucking up water, infiltrating it? How long does the quality of that organic material stay high and give us the benefits we want?
That was my next question involving a metrics for evaluating, you know, the effectiveness of this. And it sounds like you've got a good plan for that. So.
We're going to find out. There's a lot of study in the area, but there's no, there's just no replicating when you're on the ground. Figure out exactly what it looks like there. We want to know what the Clive situation is going to be. So that when developers come and say, I want to meet my requirements this way, we can tell them, okay, here's the math. Here's how it's going to work.
The data will be interesting, right? The real numbers, because you, you do a simple test like what you're looking at, just a grass colorization between the two neighbors. And you can see that, right? But you don't have the data and the numbers. We did 40 acres on our farm land out of Metro Race Authority and compared it to one that we hit with fertilizer. We got no yield difference. I mean, right? Meaning we didn't lose anybody using compost. Pretty cool.
Yep. The compost is the key. That's what's, you know, it creates some situations where you got to explain to people why they say, well, I still have weeds in my yard. I wasn't expecting that I was going to have weeds. Well, actually you put compost on it and every green thing is going to survive and do well. So these are the kinds of things that we are going to benefit from Polk County, learn that stuff, doing it with Polk City. We're going to benefit from that as we bring a lot, bring along our partners in the city.
Just compost, we're putting any seed down at all or?
We are overseeding as well. That's how they did it at Polk City. We want to make sure that it's, it's a, it's not something that we had written into the grant, but it's sort of a practice as we've been double checking with contractors. They say, while you're at it, you may as well, especially if you're just going to use a blower to put it on. The seed can already be incorporated into what you're blowing out onto the yards.
Thank you.
Happy to answer other questions. Pete Stroud did a great job on this. Personally, thank you to all of you for the opportunity to work on it. Thanks to Matt. I want to thank also my colleagues Doug, Jeff, Richard. They've taught me so much about water, so much more than I ever thought I'd know 18 months before, when we start, 18 months ago.
Is this the story map? Is this on, this is on the city's website?
This is live. Yep. So right now, if you go to services, it says water resources. Click on that and it redirects to this website. And we'll continue to tune it up so it's ready to go. Our primary focus right now is this. That's what people think about first.
Well, I enjoyed reading the plan. I mean, it's, it's, it's a big plan. There's a lot to it, right? So it took a while to, till we do that. But, you know, in my opinion, we're in the right direction.
Thank you.
We've had these discussions.
And to that point, again, this is a discussion item tonight. We know it's a big plan. We want to give you time to go through it and then he'll have an action item for you at your next.
That's correct.
To approve. We know this is a lot and, and I know y'all have been working on it for a couple of years. But we want to make sure you got, you have time with this. So.
Interesting. See what costs associated with this plan as well.
The kick in from the utility just this year to capital projects is over half a million dollars. And it's scheduled to stay that way for the next five. So we're banking a lot on getting this utility working well.
Double digit increase in the stormwater fund, man. I get it.
And as we discussed with the rates, we'll be coming back to your grade structure less than a year from now.
Based on, based on pervy services, right?
Well, what you, yeah, what council provided direction on is two tier grade structures for water irrigation and for stormwater based on the house, the impervious surface on the residential side.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next we have reports.
Pete? Thank you, Your Honor. Legislative priorities at the federal level, we're working on drafting those. Our two big topic areas are the University Boulevard Flood Prone Property Area and then the 8035 interchange with US 6. So excited to share those stories. They are very complex stories. Everybody who's coming out to DC, I'll brief you before we all go out there. So you understand how we're really trying to frame that up. The survey drafting for the resident survey is completed. Thank you for your feedback. For those of you who were able to engage on that when we were touring the Harbach Center, postcards and letters will start hitting mailboxes on April 20th. That's when it will also be live on the portal for folks to complete the survey online. The first people who get it have been selected though at random, so we get a statistically significant sample. It opens up to the rest of the community who would want to participate, starting on May 25th. We'll be out in the field collecting data all the way through June 8th and we'll have our reports by July 6th. Plenty of time before we get to strategic planning. Clark Trees, residents on Friday, last past Friday, letter was sent, they received it over the weekend. And for those properties where we were planning to put a tree, we're now receiving emails and phone calls. We're now receiving emails and phone calls from folks where they give us our preference on from the species list for their top three. We wanted to really show people that we wanted to be responsive to them. So hopefully we'll hear from everybody before we get to our planting date, which is targeted for Arbor Day at the very end of April. Already talked about the test plot that we're going to be putting up uh out at Harbach, excuse me, at Campbell Recreation Area. I will have pictures and videos to share. We're going to do a long time lapse video on that. So people understand what happens to the compost. Trash Bash is coming up. That's uh this, the next to last Friday and. In uh April, all the dates and specifics are on the city website. We've earned 60 volunteers and counting, hope to get to 80. And then finally, uh for those of you uh who are checking your city email, you may have seen that something about security, cybersecurity to watch a video. You all have your accounts have all been added to that group that are getting those. If you would, please take a look at those. We're also going to be starting to incorporate you, I believe, into some of our phishing. Where if you click badly, you will be prompted with a email of shame to don't click badly in the future. Eight goats born, they're out, most of them out in the paddock. We'll have Axios down there tomorrow to do a little more storytelling about the goats. Another chance to talk about that great program.
Thank you, Pete. Any questions for Pete?
Pete, real quick, what's, what's that construction going on uh right alongside the Green Belt? I thought it had to do with the SQR program just west of 128th Street.
That's part of the 128th Street widening.
No, 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 down below by the Green Belt.
That's the DOT project.
Okay, that's DOT.
Yep. Yep. It's part of their.
It's part of the work that they have to be doing with that. And some of it's the stormwater components.
Recut? Uh, no report, but I'll just reiterate that I'm honored to be here and I'm looking forward to doing the work. Hey.
Well, I hate to say this, but I do have a few things tonight. Um. So I mentioned I went, uh attended the neighborhood meeting that Doug held. That was a very good on the uh flood buyout uh program uh for those residents. Um, NPO exec, the exec team had a uh. A facility, a tour of the new transload facility. It's about, I don't remember exactly, but something like 125,000 square feet. It's just enormous. Um it's incredibly impressive. Uh they have three different trains that feed into it. They have 12 uh bays where full size semis can back up and and load their cargo. Um with the turning radius of all the concrete that's needed for all of that. Uh it's on many acres of land. I don't remember, but. Um, it is live. Um, they do have some shipments coming in. They're not super busy yet. Uh they got to get the word out. They got to do some marketing, some business development. Uh, a lot of the suppliers just don't know about it at this point. So they've got to kind of build up that business. Um, I asked about their business plan and it sounds like they're, they're hopeful that they're going to be able to break even uh by the end of this year. And then by within two years, start turning a profit. We'll see. Um, but that's, that's their intent. Um, it does. Um, allow for lots of different commodities that can come through there, lumber, grain, all kinds of foodstuffs, you name it. So it really can be a, a, a really nice economic development tool for the, for the region. So um, so that's up and running and it is live. So. Um, and they're also.
Did I toured that we are looking at? Potential moving commodities.
Yeah, a lot of, I think a lot of this, they said they had 20 different meetings or different commodities that they're meeting with, that they are very hopeful that they're going to get a good percentage of them. It's interesting that uh they're actually, they're meeting with Camp Dodge officials for staging for armor and artillery and. Because they can, they've got the room to do it under, not underneath the satellite. So um, kind of interesting. So. Anyways, so that's transload. There's a new uh hazard mitigation grant program that is, has started up or that will be starting up. Um, that came about as a result of the derecho uh where they'll be um giving out grants uh for various hazard mitigation uh stuff. So I will get Doug and Matt that information if you don't already have it. Um, you can start um applying for those project grants uh by the end of this year. And uh they'll start dispersing by uh spring of next year is.
More about it at the next meeting.
Oh, you got it? You got the information?
It's part of the funding strategy for what?
Okay, yeah. All right. Well, then I won't send you what I have then because you probably have a lot more. Um, but yeah, that's on the, on the agenda there. Um. Last thing, um Icon Water Trails. So been getting a lot of press out there, some, some challenges. Uh the bid environment is not good as we know. So just to take a quick step back, uh if you recall, a bid was sent out back in December. It got no bids because the, it's a very complex project. Um, that has a lot of risk in it, involved in it with the Scott Street Dam mitigation. Um, and and they didn't have enough time for the contractors complaining they didn't have enough time to bid on it. So. Put it back out to bid in March. Uh, we got one bid back uh on that project. Um, the original engineer's estimate was thirty, 39 million. The bid that came back was 73 million. Um, and that was just too far out of budget to, to move forward with. Um, so um that we, we did get um approval from Federal Highway. That we can split the bids up into four separate bids. So the Scott Street Dam would be one and then there's three uh like park like bids, uh like Birdland Marina, for example, Prospect Park. Um, the belief is that by doing that, uh you'll be able to get a lot more bids for the smaller projects. Um, which hopefully will allow it to, to come down. Um, but we have gone back, we are going back to the design team to kind of force them to. To really get a little bit more realistic. There's no chance we're going to hit that, that 39 million. So we need to understand what we are willing to accept. Um, Gatto and myself both made it real clear that from the public side, we're probably not getting anything more from the public. Entities. So we really need to figure out how this um, this budget's going to work. Um, there are time constraints. If you recall, we got the build grant um of 25 million to move forward with this. But it has, the first disbursement has to be done by September 30th. So uh it, so we have to get the, the new bids out for these four projects uh by July in order to make that September 30th date. Um, so anyways, um, there's some struggles there on the icon side that um we're trying to work through, but um. Uh, you know, we're, we're still hopeful that it's going to be able to move forward. Um. Yes, I've got more on that, but I'll, I'll save it for later, but that's, that's kind of where we're at on that. Um, and we're, we're probably going to have. Uh, an emergency session or a special session uh of the board here in the next couple of weeks after we, after the design team has been able to revisit the specs. And figure out what the actual budget's going to be that we're going to try to get to with these four projects. So that should happen probably in about two weeks.
Instead, questions?
What I got out of that mayor was he did got a line.
Yeah, that's all right.
There you go. Eric?
Yeah, a couple of things here. Attended the MAC meeting with mayor and one of the key things that came out was proposed legislation. That would streamline, say if you've got a, a problem bar or something causing issues, it would streamline the process to uh closing down the, the bad players. As we all know, that can be a very. Lengthy and, and appeal driven process right there. So we'll see what happens there. Also, the mayor attended the Fairway Groundbreak and excited to have. Fairways being a, a continue their relationship and collaboration with the city Clive with their new facility there at 161st Nickman. And uh, uh they're looking at opening, I think they said, uh, what'd they say, John?
It was many, but let's see.
Yeah, end of the year or something of that nature.
All right. Thank you. Susan?
Thank you, Your Honor.
Michael?
Yeah, few items. Um, so we'll have a couple of things that are coming up that I just want to make the council aware of. I'll be attending a, an airport. Uh update meeting with the uh other metro city managers on Monday. I'm sure we're going to hear a lot more about, again, bids, cost inflation.
Litting costs.
And uh what they're intending to do um related to phasing, potentially phasing that project. Um, uh the mayor and I and Richard will also be sitting down with the Clive Historical Society regarding some concerns that they have, just in terms of where they're at as an organization and viability. Um, I know they've reached out to us to, to have a sit down and a chat. Um, one thing I wanted to mention too is last weekend, I, um, and I know some of you already started to send these out. Um, personal invites for people that you know for the Economic Vitality Committee. Um, I know the first link I sent didn't work as great as I wanted it to. So hopefully you've got kind of a copy and paste format that you can utilize for that. Um, also, uh, wanted to make the council aware that I know you've seen some correspondence on the uh Senior Living project on 118th Street. Um, the neighborhood has, um, there hasn't been a formal application yet because there isn't consent. Um, yet that we've seen, but that the neighborhood is already aligned to protest any rezoning that may happen there. Again, still too early to know whether or not it is even going to come before the council and in the short term. Um, because the, the developer does not have, at least we haven't been shown consent. Um, over 50% of surrounding property owners to even move the rezoning forward. But anyway, just wanted, I know some of you have been getting some correspondence on that. So I wanted to make you aware of that. And then lastly, um. Uh, Mickel and Councilman Mickel and Nate and I are getting together on a number of fronts to, for orientation purposes over the next couple of weeks and will be a couple of months. As we get to further into the departments, but excited about that. Um, and then uh we are going to try the March or the May 5th council meeting. Um, with the ribbon cutting kind of launch of Harbach Center and the Cinco de Mayo party that night. Is, is to have the council meeting in the uh community room there. So we're going to try to keep the agenda light as light as I, I can make it. For y'all in terms of knowing that that'll be kind of a busy place that night, but I think we'll make it work and we'll have, so you'll be there for hopefully the. Ribbon cutting at five and then you'll be able to stay there. Hopefully uh we'll work it out for the council meeting and uh have it all there that night. And so then uh. Enjoy after. I wasn't going to say it, but I knew you, one of you probably will say it. So that's all I have, Your Honor, unless there's any questions.
Thank you. Any questions for Matt? Any correspondence, Matthew?
No, sir.
We'll adjourn at nine oh one.